Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone present in the chamber and those listening online to the business of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee meeting. My name is Councillor Thomas Sneath and I am the Chairman of this committee. Councillor Bailey Robinson, the Vice Chairman, is also present. Can I remind you that the audio visual feed for this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the County Council website and all your comments will remain accessible online? There is no fire drill planned this morning, so in the event of the fire alarm sounding, please leave the chamber through the doors at the Via and assemble outside the Council Chamber in the car park. Please, if you have any mobiles, laptops or iPads, please place them on silent mode. The hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collected and announced by the Vice Chairman. I will try to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. I would appreciate contributions to be clear and concise and ask that you indicate early when you wish to speak. We will now move on to the formal part of the agenda. Agenda item number one, apologies for absence. Go to Rachel.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from Councillor Edgu Sagorsky and Councillor Grantham. We also have Councillor Beecham replacing Councillor Grantham for this meeting only.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number two is declarations of members' interests. This is an opportunity for members to declare any pecuniary or other interests. Do members wish to declare any? Councillor Byrne.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to declare on probity reasons relating to item five, a close family member holds a senior role within Network Rail, however, he has no dealings at all in Lincolnshire. I'd also like to declare under the same item that my father was one of the founders of Hull Trains. He has now retired and no longer plays any role at all in the company. I therefore do not feel that either of these items preclude me from taking part in the discussion of this. I'd also like to declare under item eight that I am trained as a community speed watch volunteer, and again, I don't feel that precludes me from taking part. Thank you.
Wonderful. Please let the record show and reflect that Councillor Byrne has declared an interest in those items. I too am community trained for speed watch as well, and again, I will declare that interest, but again, it will not preclude me from that item. Thank you very much. Agenda item number three, minutes of the meeting held on the 28th July 2025. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record. They are found on pages five to sixteen of the agenda pack. Do we have a proposer for those? Councillor King and the seconder, Councillor Sheard. We'll now take that to a vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Those minutes will be agreed as a correct record and I will sign them at the end of the meeting. Agenda item number four is announcements by the Chairman, Executive Councillors and Lead Officers. Just one announcement for myself, and that is that the Lynx Lab visit date has now been changed and the visit will be rescheduled for the 16th of October from 10am. The new calendar invites have been circulated, but should you have not received one or have any queries, please contact your designated DSO or our scrutiny officer. Moving on, do we have any announcements by the Executive Councillors?
There's no announcements at the present time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And finally, do we have any announcements by the senior officers?
No, Chairman, no announcements.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the main business of the meeting. Agenda item number five is regional rail and strategic role in providing connectivity supporting Lincolnshire communities and the economy. This item can be found on pages seventeen to twenty-two of the agenda pack. The report provides an update summary regarding strategic planning for future usage and infrastructure requirements of the rail network and control period seven maintenance and renewal scheme relevant to Lincolnshire County Council Region. We're here today as it asks that the committee discuss progress on the rail-related issues with representatives of Network Rail and East Midland Railway and consider infrastructure and regional rail services provision and the role of the rail in Lincolnshire going forward. Before we proceed with the consideration of this item, I would like to clarify the order in which speakers will address the committee here today. The report will be introduced by Mrs Jane Winford, Rail Policy Officer, place, Mrs Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Investment, is also in attendance for the discussion. We will then proceed with the presentation by Network Rail, and here with us in the chamber, we have Mr Jonathan Boot, Public Affairs Manager, East Midlands Route, Mr James Bradley, Lead Strategic Planner, South, Eastern Strategic Planner, and Mr Neil Tether. Network Rail has joined the meeting via Teams. Our next guest speaker in attendance are representatives of the East Midlands Railway, and here with us in the chamber, we have Chris Patman, Strategic Timeline, Timetable Development Manager, East Midlands Railway, and George Selby, Stakeholder Engagement Manager, East Midlands Rail. Following the conclusion of both presentations, I will open up to the wider chamber where main members will be have the opportunity to raise points and ask questions to our lead officers and guest speakers. Please retain your input until the end of the presentations and please highlight to the Vice Chairman, who will require, we will compile a list of when you wish to speak. Where members have more than one question, please indicate, and if we have time, we will take them concurrently, but if we have lots of speakers, I will come back to you. Thank you. We will now proceed on with the introduction of the report before us. Over to you, Mrs Winford.
Good morning, everybody. Lincolnshire County Council, we work to influence better outcomes for the county, so that's rail passenger services and the infrastructure that the services run over. So each year, we invite both Network Rail and East Midlands Railway, who are the train operator who provide the majority of our regional and local services in the county. Please do note they're not the only operator in the county, but they do provide most of our services. So we invite them to this committee meeting annually just to provide an overview really on how we're progressing with our priorities for the region and looking forward to the future as well in the long-term planning process. So without more ado, may we move on to Network Rail, who are going to give us an update around the rail infrastructure for the region. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me now? Good morning and thank you for inviting us to attend today. So at Network Rail, I'm going to give a brief overview, and then I've got two colleagues who are going to talk about Swindaby and the developments at Swindaby, and then we're going to look into a strategic case facing Lincolnshire as a whole and the East Midlands Route. The December 2025 timetable will have implications for train services in Lincolnshire. My colleagues in East Midlands Railway will pick up the impacts, I'm sure, on service development and service implementation, but there will be a 20% additional weekend services for passengers, and this will be achieved by reducing dwell time and turnaround and improving performance on the network. We are aware that Newwick Flat Crossing has got impacts, and we are monitoring the time, we will be monitoring the timetable for the first six weeks and contingency plans are agreed and in place. Infrastructure, we have an infrastructure working group set up to discuss and monitor the activities of the implementation of the timetable, and this will be reviewed ongoing. With regards to the stations that are for access for all, so that is introducing new lifts to the stations, the stations of Sleaford and Stamford have both received development funding from the Department for Transport. This is a government-led and funded initiative, and it is funded by the department. Both Sleaford and Stamford have received feasibility study, and this will be undertaken as soon as possible. There are further funding rounds to be undertaken, and there is no confirmation that the two schemes will definitely go ahead at this moment in time as they're awaiting further rounds of funding from the Department for Transport. And I want to touch on the next funding cycle for Network Rail. We're funded in five-year cycles known as control periods, and our next control period, control period eight, starts in 2025 and runs till 2029. We are in very early preparation and engagement with stakeholders at the moment, and we have written to the leader of this council and other local authorities, and further workshops and engagement will be undertaken in the forthcoming months. I'm now going to hand over to my colleague, who's going to talk through the Swindaby Resignaling Project update, and that's my colleague Neil Tether, who I believe is joining online for our Teams.
Good morning, everybody. As Jonathan says, thank you, Jonathan, for that, that leading. I shall try and share the presentation with you guys. I'm not sure if Jonathan had it or was able to put it up. Just bear with me a second. Let that show on the screen if you can confirm that that's...
Yes, we can, Neil.
Right, Swindaby Resignaling Project update. Swindaby area, as we know, it's got its own signal box in the area, it's a mechanical signal box. This was commissioned in 1967, so it's quite old. It's approximately 10 miles a secondary route, which is a spare from the east coast main line and a national strategic freight route. There's 15 level crossings, so there's nine AHB type, one miniature stoplight, one set of mechanical gates, and four user word crossings. There's a local stopping passenger service, and there's a long-distance mainline services to London Kings Cross and St Pancras that utilise this line. The National Digital Railway Strategy upgrades this route to digital in-cap signalling, and that's circa 2045. So the project key scope outputs, now these are to convert three existing AHB crossings or one gate to cross into manually controlled barriers with obstacle detection type level crossings, and the four listed down there are Cottage Lane, Collingham, Swindaby Station and Hycombe Station. We will fully renew one AHB crossing, which will be Swindaby Road. We'll renew the trackside signalling, telecoms and power systems with up-to-date modern equivalents to the current standards. We will decommission from operational use the Swindaby Station signal box. The signal box will remain unaltered and it will remain in its current location because it is a listed building. We will transfer control of Swindaby signalling control area ultimately to Lincoln Signalling Control Centre. So the current status, so following resource and time constraints caused by the existing main contractor, being unable to meet the demands of the entire portfolio, the current contract between Network Rail and the contractor has now formally come to an end. Network Rail is in the process of revalidating the scope requirements, and this is a necessity because it's taken so long with a legacy contractor that we had, that some of the equipment's now obsolete, so we've got to revamp and revalidate the scope requirements with that view on technology becoming not available. So we're addressing non-obsolescence issues and ensuring that the Swindaby project moves forward with suitable technology in a timely manner. Network Rail is in the process of procuring a new supplier with a formal process that commences late 2025 with an anticipated contract award in April 2026. Outline design is complete, but the project anticipates that some elements of the design will need to be revalidated and revisited due to the above-mentioned changes in technology as a result of obsolescence issues. So far, which is probably part of the reasons why we're separating from the contract, from the legacy contractor that we had, we've had 200 track crossings have been installed together with a provision of an ODA and all supply at Cottage Lane, and the emergency crossover at Swindaby has been recovered and plainlined. And we've also been purchasing land that we will require for installing the new AHBs. So on to the next slide. The next step is revalidation of scope requirements and engage with a new supplier. That's anticipated October 2025. We're still governed by legal responsibilities where we can't talk to any additional supplier until we've severed all legal ties with the existing supplier. So formal procurement process commences October 2025, anticipating a contract award in April 2026. Indicative time, commissioning time scales, we're predicting 2029 based on current practices and ways of working. Ongoing life extension activity is required to maintain safety and reliability is ongoing as a business as usual type situation. And that's the end of the slide. Any questions on that?
We'll take the questions at the end of all presentations, if that's okay, Neil.
That's not a problem.
Can we have the next guest speaker, please?
Yep. Hello, thank you. Good morning and thank you, Chairman. So my name's James Bradley, I cover long-term planning for Network Rail's eastern region, and it's a pleasure to be with you here this morning. So I'm just going to mention about a piece of work that is underway at the moment, looking at a strategy for the Midland Main Line and the East Midlands Route as a whole and its relevance for Lincoln, Lincolnshire. And then just briefly touch upon a few wider pieces of work that are relevant also to Lincoln and Lincolnshire in the process as well. Probably just first of all, note that Network Rail has a role for carrying out long-term planning on behalf of the rail industry and its stakeholders, but as we move into Great British Railways, that role will then transfer and move forward, working more closely with colleagues and operators as time goes by. Probably just to highlight, so we do have an established rail strategy for the East Midlands. It was produced and published in 2016, so as you can appreciate, that is some time ago. And although there's been quite a number of individual studies carried out in that time, not least one specifically for Lincoln itself, we've taken the view that it's timely to look at the entire East Midlands Route with a focus on the Midland Main Line corridor and date the long-term strategy. So what we're involved in at the moment is looking over the next 25 years, so between now and 2050, first of all, looking at what growth in the passenger and freight network we expect to take place over that time. So it's looking at scenarios as to what that growth might be and the implications of that growth, looking at the capacity challenges that would then propose for the network as it is today in terms of stations, congestion, rail services, you know, the whole suite of things. Looking at the opportunities for improving connectivity, so thinking about the journey time or potential journey time improvements that could be realised in the long term for the entire network, and that includes Lincoln. Even thinking in terms of, while the HS2 scheme has reduced in its scope over the last, over recent years, thinking about the extent of it as it is today, could there be some benefits to the East Midlands that could arise from that? So thinking quite objectively about the long term beyond schemes that are currently committed. And then looking at stations as well, so thinking about improvements to stations that we think that there are opportunities to improve over that time. Now, this piece of work is facilitated by Network Rail, but it's carried out on behalf of the wider rail network and its stakeholders. So it's been developed with colleagues in East Midlands Railway and other operators. We have liaison with the county councils, with sub-national transport bodies and the American combined authorities. That's done through a partner working group that's been established, that was started in June. The piece of work is expected to last for approximately 12 months, so that the sort of formal findings of this are not expected to come out until roughly this time next year. So I know that sounds a horribly long time, but there are interim deliverables through that process. The extent of it is the entirety of Network Rail's eastern, East Midlands Route, which includes Lincolnshire, Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire, and then the counties going south into London. Just to give you an idea of sort of the issues that it's likely to pick up, so I've mentioned one already, so looking at growth and the impact of that, looking at performance opportunities, so identifying where on the network, those are the most performance challenges that make trains run late, and thinking about the options there that could help improve reliability. Connectivity and markets, so one of the exercises as part of it is to look at how centres in the East Midlands, including Lincoln, are served with the wider network across Great Britain, and looking at a benchmark between others of a similar size, so looking at how there may be sort of a deficiency in how it's connected with other centres relative to other towns and cities of similar size. The East Midlands itself is a crucial part of the national freight network, it's really central to freight movements from ports to other major cities, so looking at the impact of the government target for freight growth, which is 75% over that same time period, to look at the implications of that and what might need to be done to improve. Decarbonisation, so looking at the, working in partnership with EMR and other operators as to how the fleet of trains on the passenger network might need to change to meet the government's goal of decarbonisation over that same time period, looking at stations. And then finally, we're looking at, do a small piece of work with colleagues in National Highways to think about how the motorway network, in particular the M1, could benefit from specific targeted rail schemes that might have some modal shift opportunities. So this is more of like a sort of an extra piece of work we're looking at just to see whether there's any opportunities there between sort of multimodal road and rail. Probably just to highlight, this study fits with a number of studies, so there's a range of bits of strategic advice which some of you may be familiar with in recent times in the Derby area, Sheffield, Leicester, Trent Junction, so this brings all those pieces of work together. Probably just notice about time scales, so we did a call for evidence back in July, so we put out to partners a request for any comments on what was then a remit, but also for any information evidence that would be useful to consider as part of doing the study. So that was carried out in July. We've got a freight workshop coming up next week, so that's where we're inviting the freight operators to come and contribute to the study. Following that, we've got the sort of the delivery of the first technical work streams in early December, so that's the, looking at the future growth scenarios and what that might mean over the next 25 years. Following that, by the end of April next year, we expect all of the work streams to have concluded, and then we'll proceed there to present findings and look to finalise and publish in September next year. I'll just finally just quickly mention, so that's the East Midlands and Midland Main Line Study. At the same time, there's also a study of a similar scale being, taking place on the east coast main line, and I mention this because obviously that is just as relevant to Lincolnshire as the Midland Main Line. It's of a similar scope, and I won't go into too much detail on this. This is primarily about choices for a very capacity-constrained east coast main line in the long term, recognising that there isn't planned to be now a new strategic north-south high-speed route to the East Midlands, Yorkshire and beyond. So it's looking at the east coast main line, the role it's going to serve in the long term. And that sort of throws questions for Lincolnshire because clearly at the moment, there's a, there's a pattern of services from London to Lincoln that are quite well-established. One of the things this study will do is to look at how that might evolve in the future and many options that could take place. That could be a mixture of actually improving the service using the East Midlands, sorry, using the Midland Main, east coast main line, but operating in a different way. It could provide better direct opportunities through Peterborough and going up the, through Spalding and Sleaford and have a better service along there, or it could be about making better interchange. There's a whole range of options that are being looked at as part of that, which I know some members may well be involved in already, but we should be expecting some early findings of that next month, so by the end of next month, which will be interesting to members. I'm conscious of time, so I'll stop there, but at the end of this session, happy to take any questions, Chairman. Oh, and I'll just say, there are some slides which I was intending to share, but that, that can be available to members afterwards if that's helpful.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking for Network Rail? If not, we'll move over to representatives of East Midlands Railway.
Red's working. Thank you very much, everyone. That's better. Thank you for inviting Chris and I along. I'm George Selby, Stakeholder Engagement Manager for East Midlands Railway. Just for the benefit of all, I just wanted to give a brief background to how East Midlands Railway came into formation, which was in August 2019, taken over from the incumbent operator that was East Midlands Trains at the time. Our role is to serve the people of South Yorkshire, the East Midlands, Lincolnshire of course, into places like London, St Pancras, and connect those regional places in the interim. One of the things we've done in the early stages of our franchise was a fleet cascade where we had what were Class 153s and Class 156, which were quite old trains serving the region, built in the late 80s and early 90s, to be replaced by more modern units called Class 170s. We've done that in the last few years. That cascade, I always liken it to almost the Avengers, so we took some from West Midlands trains, from southwestern railways, from Transport for Wales, and we've accrued them, and what that's given us is a 50% uplift for our regional services compared to what we had before. Just to, I had some slides similarly, but, and hopefully they can be shared afterwards or I'd be delighted to, but just to put some numbers on that, our fleet position when we came into being was 103 carriages. With this cascade, we have now increased that to 154, that gives us a lot more opportunity and reduces some of the capacity problems we inherited. Just on that as well, the Class 170 units are a significantly younger unit as well, so it's reduced the average age of the fleet, which brings reliability benefits and they're a more robust unit. As we move towards current times, what's been undertaken right this moment, that fleet and our existing fleet, which was a Class 158, are undergoing a £28.2 million refurbishment at the moment, which I'll talk a little bit more at length in a moment. Just for the benefit of Lincoln and Lincolnshire as well, just to provide some additional context, we provide two early morning intercity services into London, St Pancras as well, and we have a brand-new fleet that is being introduced at the back end of this year and then being cascaded into the business through 2026 and 2027, just for a bit of additional context. And we're a big employer in the region as well, with a driver's depot at Lincoln that you may have seen being completed opposite Lincoln Station, as well as manned stations at Skegness, Boston and the like. So we have a big footprint in Lincolnshire, just wanted to highlight that. As I go into the fleet refurbishments, the Class 170s I've talked about, we have 43 of those units, and the refurbishment will focus on customer experience areas with brand-new seats, tables, carpets, a deep clean, the toilets are having a refresh, the vestibule areas have been addressed and repainted. I've had the pleasure of being on one of the units. We've got three in passenger service at the moment, a fourth is coming into service this very month, and they do feel like you're boarding a new train to the passenger when he or she is boarding. The touch point, everything that you would come into contact, luggage areas, as I say, carpets, tables, seats are all brand-new. So yeah, although 20 or so years old, they are, to the touch and feel to the passengers and then they will feel new. They are the backbone of our regional services. They serve Lincoln, they also serve our Liverpool to Norwich line, workshop into Nottingham, and da-da-da-da, our crew to Lincoln line that Chris will touch upon, which gets enacted in December. We've worked with Ariva Train Care Crew to deliver these units, as I say, the fourth one's just about to be delivered to us, and then the fifth unit will go off immediately to begin that, that process of getting it turned. to begin that process of getting it turned around. So we're really excited about this, because as we work through 2026 and into the early part of 2027, that will be concluded and it will bring a great customer experience benefit to our passengers. We also have Class 158 units that serve the region. These are a little older, built in the late 80s and early 90s, but again, we're performing a full fleet refurbishment on those units too, with their external livery has been brought in line with our aubergine colour to match the remainder of our fleet. And again, the seats have been reupholstered with new seat foams and covers, tabletops, carpets, vestibule flooring, should I say, and a deep cleaner passenger area. So again, similarly, and should I say CCTV is being replaced as well to make passengers feel secure when they're travelling with us, et cetera, so. Enhanced safety and security. So as I say, similarly to the Class 170 fleet, when you board our Class 158 trains, they'll feel like a new train. The first passenger, first unit is in passenger service as we speak. We did an unveiling at Nottingham two months ago or so. That work's been conducted in two locations, partly in Bristol with Ariva Train Care, again, our partners, but we're also doing some units in-house at our East Croft Depot in Nottingham. So concurrently at the moment, there's two units in refurbishment, so although that's a little bit behind the Class 170s, that's as part of the plan, and actually with two facilities conducting that work, there'll be real momentum behind that fleet refurbishment again through 2026 and into 2027. And what those units, as I say, will do, will bring enhanced customer experience to our passengers, but we've also got a December 25 timetable change, which we believe will be transformational for the region, that my colleague Chris is going to talk about this afternoon, this morning, should I say. Thank you very much.
So thank you, I'm Chris Patman, Strategic Timetable Development Manager, and I'll talk a bit more about the timetable with you. So on the 14th December this year, we're going to be introducing a new regional timetable, and the growing and successful city of Lincoln is really at the heart of this change. We've been through various stakeholder workshops, where we shared timetables, and we've been able to make improvements to that, so we've been able to do things like improve the New York Northgate connections, have some extra Saturday capacity between Lincoln and Cleethorpes, and improve the service, make some small improvements at Ancaster and Rossby. Now, and usually for a regional timetable change, this actually has a positive business case, so it has a £1 million benefit to the East Midlands franchise, but a £2.4 million wider economic benefits, this includes access to jobs, congestion relief and regional development. So how we've managed to achieve this is a real focus on connections. So we're not, we say, running more trains, but by making the connections better, people will want to use the train. Sleaford is a very good example of that. If you want to travel today between Lincoln and Boston, you may have waits of up to 50 minutes at Sleaford. This timetable brings that down to around 10 minutes throughout the day. Growing markets, we've looked at where, so for example, between Lincoln and Derby, rail does not have a high modal share, but we're introducing two trains an hour, that will grow the rail market size. We looked at small extensions of services, so just by extending the services on from Grimsby to Cleethorpes, we're unlocking a big market potential at very little cost. And there's a lot of suppressed demand on the routes. Anyone that travels on the Nottingham to Lincoln route will recognise just how busy the trains are, particularly on a Saturday, which will discourage people from travelling. So adding this extra capacity going from one to two trains an hour would encourage more people to use the train. And a lot of work has gone into this timetable and performance, and a good performing railway generates revenue, and we've modelled our timetable to demonstrate that this is the case. So really, where we started from was Newark Flat Cross in the big constraint, and we started with a blank sheet of paper on the Nottingham to Lincoln route. And as ever with a timetable change, we couldn't just contain it's that one route, it ended up being a much bigger change to the regional timetable. So what you end up with is the current Lincoln to Leicester service becomes a Nottingham to Leicester shuttle, and then the Matlock to Nottingham service is extended through to Lincoln and Cleethorpes, and the Crewe to Newark Castle service gets extended through to Lincoln. So just to give a bit more detail of what this actually means for Lincolnshire. So one of the things I've just touched on, we've got this new direct route from the Peak District to the Lincolnshire coast. We're seeing, you know, very strong demand in the leisure sector, and this route will really unlock a lot of potential, we think, connecting the main cities and then the tourist points along the route. We're going to have a standard hour clock face timetable, so if you turn up to want to get your train back to Sleaford or to Peterborough, you can turn up with certainty knowing that it leaves at 19 minutes past the hour from Lincoln, it's not a different minutes past the hour each hour, and you haven't got long gaps in the service, it's consistently hourly all day. We focused a lot on connections. I've already talked about Sleaford, but it's not just Sleaford, it's Peabro. We've improved connections with TPE services for the Barton on Humber. Peterborough, we've improved connections with services to Norwich and to London. So if you want to go from London to Lincoln, in one hour, you can get a 47 minutes past the hour direct service to Lincoln. In the other hour, you catch the 47 minutes past the hour, which is the York service, to change at Peterborough onto an East Midlands Railway service to Lincoln. So again, it's that consistency. Doncaster, we focused on connections to the north, to Newcastle and Edinburgh, and just by going through to Derby unlocks so many connectional opportunities that it makes it easier to get to Birmingham, but it also makes it much easier to get to Bristol and the South West. We're running additional services, so obviously the big thing is the two trains per hour to Nottingham is the main change, but also on the route between Lincoln and Peterborough, we've got an extra train on a weekday and four extra trains on a Saturday on that route in each direction. There's been some compromises, as there is with a timetable change, and the Newark Northgate service has had to be reduced slightly to accommodate the additional trains to Nottingham, but even there, where we have re-timed them, we've changed the times to focus on the connections. So for example, now you've got an evening peak service from London King's Cross that connects with an EMR service at Newark Northgate to Lincoln, which doesn't currently exist. But what this timetable does is it's a big increase in capacity. Across all the service groups that EMR operate, we'll be delivering 20% more seats to and from Lincoln, and that's 2,000 on a weekday and over 3,000 on a Saturday on the Nottingham route alone. Hycom sees a big uplift to the service. I mean, I think, go back to the headlines in May 2015, it had an extra 14 services. Now in December 25, it's going to have an extra 22 services. And you can see Hycom how it's grown, you've got businesses locating there, you've got a lot of housing development going on, and by stopping the trains there, we're just going to continue to grow the demand for rail travel, we hope, from Hycom. We've done a lot of work on the performance, so we've added extra dwell time at key stations like Nottingham, but we've done a lot of focus on the turnaround times, so we've got longer places like Lincoln, for example, they've got nearly 30-minute turnaround, so that we can assure trains where right times start at the start of their journey. And what we believe ultimately is these improved timetables will drive passenger growth, and if we can drive passenger growth, that helps make the case for future improvements, because if we're running empty trains, we can't justify running more trains, but if we can fill these trains, we can really make some improvements in the future. So that's a very brief overview, because it'll be a long time to explain the full detail, but yeah, welcome, any questions now, please? Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Do we have any officers that wish to comment on the report? In that case, thank you for your presentations. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make relevant statements and ask questions. councillor Robinson, do we have any speakers?
We do. First of all, councillor Eve.
Thank you very much, Sharon, thank you for the reports. My question is to Neil, who's on the Teams meeting, if he's still around. The point, I was looking to get clarification, there's quite a large gap, what you were saying, between the current contract, supplier contract, and the new one being brought in next year. It didn't really elaborate what I brought that about, but I wonder if it could just add a little bit more information why that's happened and what potential problems that's causing with the gap between the two contracts? Thank you.
Well, basically, where we are, we're terminating with the current contractor, it's the legalities of Network Rail actually terminating their contract. We've got to justify why we've terminated, and then we've got to put a figure on that termination value based on the work that they've actually completed on our behalf. Now, we tend to be at loggerheads, I don't know specific figures, but their value, their work completed a lot higher than what Network Rail and Network Rail Independent Advisors value their work as in actual deliverables and what we've got and what we've received. So while I've were at stalemate, and someone needs to adjudicate on that, we can't go and speak to another contractor and try and engage them and gain prices, et cetera, or get into contract with anybody else, because it's viewed as unfair and unjust to the outgoing contractor. So this is what actually puts them big time scales on it, in actually getting engaged with a contractor, developing a new project, and then actually getting into contracts and delivering it. Is that the sort of time scale what you was thinking of when you asked your question?
Yeah.
Was it the time scale from in the contractor to when we're completing? Because that's just Network Rail, standard contracting procedure on what or where we are and how we engage with any project, really.
Yeah, I understand that now, thanks, for the explanation. Just wondering what problems that's led to as well, though?
Quite a few, quite a few. We've slid to quite a few financial problems, we've slid to quite a few technology problems. The technology's obsolete, so we've got to figure, you know, new ways of doing this with current technology, future-proofed technology. So rather than add on to existing, we're now entering new existing to make use of what's actually available to us for this project. It's also a technology base, and as you know, we're computers at home, it's not long before a new operating system comes in, which drives most of this technology change, it doesn't last very long. So when we've been with the, you know, with the existing supplier, we've been with them five, six, seven years, the technology that we decided upon has now sadly become obsolete, and that's sort of compounding the problem, making us go back to the drawing board somewhat and having a rethink on what's available.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, councillor Sheard.
Thank you. First of all, can I say thank you very much for the comprehensive and informative pieces that you've given us today? I think it's really encouraging to hear all of the improvements that are planned within the network and the increased timetables. I think the improvement, any improvements to the customer experience and the trains is great to hear. That being said, I think while I welcome all of the improvements, I'd like to highlight how important it is that you do actually listen to the public who are going to be using your trains and to give them avenues to voice their concerns and suggestions going forward. I think as they are going to be your primary focus, it's important to consider the cost of what fares are going to be. If you're offering all these improvements, it shouldn't reflect in the fares that you're going to charge going forward. I think the functionality of stations and the maintenance of stations also needs to be reviewed, because in more rural areas, stations are being forgotten. I'd like to say particularly Spalding Station, that I live in the area, has been forgotten and overlooked, and we could do so much more with it. So we need to look at the rural areas and ensure that stations are being kept up to date and being maintained. I think as well, you need to consider safety. So a lot of people are coming to me saying that they're travelling on trains and they don't feel safe. They don't feel safe at the stations, because at night time when they're arriving, the lighting is poor, there is nobody available there to go to if they're having any issues. They don't find that the smaller routes are manned very well, and that if something does occur, there's nobody to go to. So I think these are considerations that are needed to be looked into and taken. I think as far as public demand goes, that's actually making sure that your timetables are well displayed and that the information is out there for everybody, not just those who can go online. And I think a seven-day-a-week timetable is fantastic, but again, we need to make sure that this reaches the rural areas. People are missing vast skills opportunities and job opportunities because they're not able to connect on trains from rural areas to get to main lines where jobs are available for them. I think also going forward, you need to have a look at the impact on towns and communities of your timetables. Again, in Spalding, on certain days and certain times of the days, they are sat there for 20 minutes with gates down while various trains go through, and that's not acceptable. We need to take into account the impacts of, you know, the gates being closed and people moving throughout the towns. Having said that, again, I'd like to say thank you, and all improvements are welcomed. Just give the public an avenue to come forward and speak to you, so that we can all work together to improve it for everybody.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive, so echo much of what you've said, if that's okay. On behalf of East Midlands Railway, when we're talking about passenger responses and us being reactive to that, we have SQR, Service Quality Regime scores that go into stations and markers on things like how passengers are feeling safe and lighting and signage and all these sorts of things that we are constantly reviewing and responsive to. So that echoes exactly what you're saying about being accountable to what passenger needs are and how they're changing, and how we then tailor our services and stations for them, so completely echo your thoughts on that. In terms of, I'm just trying to recount everything you've said, so if there's anything that you want to pick me up on, you fire back, okay. But in terms of passengers accessing colleges and work and employment, that is absolutely vital, we see that is absolutely pertinent to the services we offer. I do think that some of what Chris was talking about, that we're unlocking in December, will actually help with a lot of that and provide better opportunities for people to access those places or work and education. The timetable's great as it is, but these enhancements will provide much better opportunities for people. I'm trying to think of, fire back, sorry.
One thing that needs looking at with the timetable.
Yeah.
It's great that we're increasing, absolutely fantastic, but as I say, you do need to look at some of the towns that are not accessible without going across a railway track, and these towns are gridlocked at certain points of the day, so we do need to find a way that we can increase the timetable but not shut down times, particularly school times or start of the day or finish of the day.
That is a huge challenge, particularly in Lincolnshire with the geography and infrastructure we have. We work really closely with Network Rail on that too. Obviously, safety is the primary reason for them being closed, but notwithstanding the impact it has on road users. I've got family members who live in Heckington, so I do sympathise with what you're saying. So as the new timetable beds in, that will be reviewed between ourselves as operators, other operators who benefit from using the lines too, but obviously the infrastructure lead as well in Network Rail, but yeah, completely understand the point that you're raising there. Is there anything else? Because I feel like there was lots of points. If there is anything, I could, I'd be delighted to give you my details and we could take it offline.
I was going to say, after the meeting, let's exchange details and then I can email anything through to you and you can probably pick up on more.
There were implications for Network Rail as well in the questions you asked about barrier downtime. I'm very happy to pick that up with you offline, but I would say, as only echo what George has said, we will be monitoring very closely to make sure that communities aren't cut off and that the barrier downtime is minimal with the change of the new timetable.
If I may go just next. So many thanks for the reports, very comprehensive, as everybody else said. I just want to refer to the Lincolnshire Strategic Advice 2023, it's bank round papers, on Figure 14, where it looks into the feasibility of connecting Cleethorpes, Louth, Mabelthorpe and Skegness via a mostly direct train service, and where this is outdated with the NWS no longer coming to Lincolnshire. Did the cost-benefit analysis consider potential tourism benefits connecting these three coastal seaside resorts to create a wider Lincolnshire resort that may create more tourism to our towns and promote economic growth, or is this something for the transport for Greater Lincolnshire can achieve through interconnecting our bus and train line services?
Sure, thank you, I'll come back on that one. So yes, that was an opportunity that was identified in that piece of strategic advice. So the reason for flagging that up was at the time, we're moving towards an initiative which some of you may be familiar with called Restoring Your Railways, which the previous government launched prior to that. So that was sort of almost done in a way of identifying opportunities that could be appropriate for this area. So that initiative doesn't, isn't proceeding at the moment, but nevertheless, it's not to say that that opportunity, you know, can't come back in the future. There's nothing new actively being done on that at the moment, but it is recognised that it is an area, it is an area where the network doesn't serve strongly and there may be opportunities there. So although the study that I've talked about this morning won't be covering that, you know, we will continue to look at these issues going forward. So I'd say at the moment, that piece of advice is published, it's there, it does remain a strategy, but there isn't anything actively being progressed at the moment, but we would look to in the future if the opportunity arises. But there isn't anything actively being progressed at the moment, but we would look to in the future if the opportunity arises.
Brilliant, thank you very much. And just to further on to that, it was recently confirmed that Universal Studios will be coming to the UK on a site in Bedford. They're said to have good rail connections to allow seamless travel with the network. Will this be considered in the future on how this development could benefit the East Midlands and Lincolnshire to drive international tourists to our coastal towns and historic city?
Thank you councillor Robinson. We are very early stages at the moment with regards to the Universal site. The site has changed from being a two-station platform now to being a four-platform station. We are undertaking conversations with Universal and with the Department for Transport. At the moment, we are in very early stages, but yes, we would look to enhance tourism and attractions wherever we can, working as well with authorities such as Luton because there's Luton Airport and Luton Airport expansion. But to answer your question, yes, we would be looking to sort of work closely with tourist attractions and to enhance rail use to the site in Wixons in Bedfordshire.
Brilliant. And connecting it to our resorts as well will be greatly beneficial for our resorts here in Lincolnshire.
Absolutely. We want to utilise the station and open it to as much of the network as we can.
Brilliant. Councillor Wright?
Thank you, yeah. Just a few points. First for EMR and then Network Rail. It's great to hear of planned improvements, especially with regards to Sleaford and Hycam. And looking at the various timetables and, you know, greater train numbers as we've seen. But what I'd really like to ask on that is with regards to these improvements, where are they compared to the years before that you've told us about this? So I've sat through two of your previous presentations over the years and you were still on the emergency timetable the last time you came with lots of apologies and said improvements were going to be made and the new timetables would be coming through. So we're hearing now that they're coming through, so really I'd like to know what the actual real-time timeline is for that. Because as councillor Sheard said about passengers being told correctly, if passengers over the years have been told these improvements are coming, then they'd like to know when they can actually get out of the cars and rely on these improvements to actually be delivered because it's been a long time. Same with regards to trains and carriages. Class 170s, what, 1998 they came into being? I've been sat here when we're told we're getting fantastic new trains. Don't worry about it, they're coming. Then the last time we had a presentation, I think we were told whoever shouted loudest got first and a lot of rolling stock had gone to Northern Rail, I think it was. And so there was we were told that we'd have to wait that bit longer. So if these are going to be refurbished, are they actually going to be refurbished? I know you say they're to great standard, but I'd love to be able to sit on a local train where I can actually get my knees in behind the seat in front of me. That would be a vast improvement, never mind anything else with regards to luxury. So it would be nice to know, again, that announcement was made in 2024, I think, with regards to £60 million investment in in the Class 170s. So how far along if it's, you know, over a year and it's still to come? Trains serving the local economy and jobs is great and there should be a big focus on that. But also the night time economy is a major part of our economy. And we were told and we were promised that we were going to get late-night trains, especially on the Sleaford line through to Lincoln. And I'd like to know, I could say facetiously which decade we will see those, but I would like to know, hope that it's a bit closer to actually coming into being with that. Because again, if we want to get people onto reliable service where they can get off the road and use rail service, which, you know, we delivered railways to the world and yet why is it when I go abroad, I get a much better train service than I do? And it shouldn't be down to it being a local area. Just because we're rural and local, that should not be a detriment. It isn't a detriment when I want to train out of Naples or Hamburg, but it is when I want to train out of Sleaford. So I would like to see that actually we were treated with a bit more, you know, with our passengers being listened to. And with regards to Network Rail, could I just ask, with the signal box being closed at Swindaby, what is the real-time increase in speed or the reduction in time of travel from Lincoln to Nottingham? And if that signal box is being left at its ease because it's a listed building, will there be a maintenance and a security programme put in place to make sure that doesn't end up as a dangerous structure? Thank you.
I'll pick up on the fleet questions first, if that's okay. Completely concede the point on the age of the Class 170s because they're not a new unit, but they are certainly more youthful than the units they replaced that were the Class 153s, Class 156s that were built in the late 80s, early 90s. And what it has given is a significant uplift on capacity. I've got some slides that I'd be delighted to share with you too, just to personify that and give some figures to what I'm trying to explain. And I get the frustration in terms of the refurbishment as well because people want them now. They want to feel the benefit as they're travelling to and from their places of work, education today. So what I can reassure him on is that three units are in service right this minute. We'll be on our network right now as we're speaking. The fourth unit is going in service this month. And like I mentioned on my presentation, that will mean the fifth unit goes straight off to Crewe with our partners Areva Train Care where the refurbishments take place. And as the units go through the refurbishment process, they tend to get more refined and quicker as well because you tend to see the same issues crop up and the ability to handle them and like reprieve that situation gets quicker. And we're also served by Class 158s in this region. They predominantly serve the Skegness route. Or will do, should I say. And there is one unit out there at the moment that was slightly behind the Class 170s. But two units are now being refurbished as we speak. One at Eastcroft Depot in Nottingham, which is in-house with the East Midlands Railway. And the second with Areva Train Care again, but this time at their facilities in Bristol where those works were undertaken. So although not on the timeline that might reassure the councillor, please do be reassured that there is some momentum being built behind that refurbishment programme now. And the seats are more comfortable. I'm a six foot two, six foot three man, depending who asks. And the seats are comfortable, I assure you. And they are, there is a lot more legroom, there's additional luggage space as well. On some of the units where we've inherited them, they had first-class sections, sorry, I've tapped the mic there. They've had first-class sections that are being re-categorised to standard class and that means we get additional space and capacity as well on those units, as well as uniformity. So all units will be the same and that helps with things like passenger assistance because if all the units are identical, when you're boarding somebody who might have mobility assistance needs and you're saying they're in Seat 23A, they're in Seat 23A and that's uniform across the whole fleet. So there's little benefits like that. So I'm sure on the timelines, that doesn't completely satisfy, but hopefully my explanation reassures a little and similar to your partner councillor, I'd be delighted to share more in-depth information that I might have after the session if you like and any other questions that I might have missed, please fire across. On the timetables, perhaps Chris, you might be able to help with that little bit, if that's okay.
Yeah, so as I touched on, the improvements making December 25 really are the foundation for future improvements. We've got two pieces of work going on at the minute. So we are looking at Sunday services, how we can enhance those across our network. And that does include the GNG joint line specifically between Petersborough, Sleaford and Lincoln. And we are also looking at later services and what can be done there. Now, it is quite complex to put later services on Lincolnshire because it often requires signal box openings to be extended, which can require extra shifts. And it could be a lot of cost to running one extra later train. We're going to go through all of the options to see what the cost of it is and what the benefit of it is, to see if there is a case there. But we have already, I mean, as part of December 25, actually introduced later trains. So for example, going back from Nottingham to Grantham, your last train today is at 20:46, that's going to become 21:37 in the new timetable. Later trains to Mansfield, to Matlock. But we are, rest assured, we are looking at what options there are for later trains in Lincolnshire.
Did you want to come back quickly on that?
Yeah, just quickly on that. I mean, stat fresh, I still remember the improvements to the main line with the single well track. And one of the things that was sold to residents was that if we put up with more freight on that rail and barrier times down for longer, that one of the buy-offs from that would be, we were promised improvements, especially to later trains. So to be hearing now that it's a bit complex and a bit difficult, where have those promises disappeared to?
I'm unsure of the background, but what we'll do is if it's okay, I'll share our details and we can review that if that's okay. Just because I don't have that information at hand, so I wouldn't want to mislead or give incorrect information if that's all right.
Yeah, so councillor Vernon is eager to ask a question now?
Actually, councillor Robinson, the reason that I came in on a little earlier and asked to speak is just if I could ask that all the information is shared with all members of the panel after the meeting, because I think there are a number of questions that councillors have raised that would be of interest to others. So I'd ask that sort of all of the answers provided circulated. I'm happy to wait my turn or I can come in now, whichever you prefer.
Nick can go now.
Thank you very much indeed. Lovely. So yeah, thank you very much for your presentation, which was really interesting. I'd like to ask a little bit more about the revised timetable from December 25. I understand that's going to be adding around 15,000 seats and the premise of faster journeys. Sorry. How will you be making sure that this works smoothly for passengers? And in particular, of course, there is going to be more freight carrying the line and I'd like to ask about how that is going to impact on passenger journeys. I'll run through all of my questions if I may, chairman, and then sort of come back. I think you talk about increasing timetabling. I'd just like to point out a very key timetabling sort of issue in my view. I represent Colstworth Rural. Our nearest train stations are Stamford and Grantham. A lot of people do travel into Peterborough to go. So on a Saturday, you can get a train from 2054 from Peterborough back to Stamford, that's it. So if you want to come any later, you're basically going to have to leave London at seven o'clock to get back into Stamford. The next train after that is 11:54 on a Sunday morning, which does seem to be quite a gap. So whilst you're looking at timetable requirements, I would sort of urge you to think about the logistics of that for those in the more rural areas. I'd also like to mention about ETCs, which is obviously being implemented across the Southern East Coast Main Line route and what implications, if any, that has for Lincolnshire, especially with the limited capacity along further points on the line. My colleagues obviously already discussed the Swindaby resignalling project. And again, I'd like to raise the point that I think it's really important that this valuable asset is protected. It is Grade 2 listed, it has a lot of heritage, so I think that's important. I'd also like to ask under LSI why that was not approved to progress to stage two, if you're able to give that information at this stage, although I understand you may not have that to hand. And then finally, my point regarding the transition to Great British Railways. I note the aims that are set out on page 21. And here in Lincolnshire, I can fully appreciate that some of our stations may be considered less profitable or less cost-effective than others when looking at passenger numbers and frequency of services. But these are vital for our local communities. And I'd like to ask what plans you've got or are putting in place to protect our rural communities who rely heavily on the station and how you feel the transition to GBR will benefit links railway passengers and also freight. We haven't heard very much about freight and I'm conscious it's double-edged because some feel it's taking capacity on the track away from passengers. But I do think that freight journeys can alleviate a lot of the pressures on our road system. So we shouldn't just be sort of talking about passengers. This is sort of Network Rail and East Midlands Railways, which I appreciate is not freight. But I'd like to hear a little more about your freight. Thank you. Thank you, chairman. I can appreciate I've given a lot of questions, so if you would like to provide them afterwards in the report to councillor Sheard and councillor Wright, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. If you don't mind, I'll pick up your sort of latter point first and then go back if that's okay. So just on the freight point, so both the studies I mentioned earlier will have a very strong focus on freight. I mean, certainly the MML East Midlands study will do. Not least because we're required to do that. So we have got a very clear government objective of increasing rail freight on our network by 75% and doing whatever we feel is needed to help facilitate operators to do that. So whatever capacity considerations we we do, you know, whatever improvements we propose has to take into account that that freight growth will be realised. Now, it may not, of course, because it's obviously a market, the freight market is a market. But nevertheless, we need to plan on the network, being able to, you know, being able to deliver that level of freight capacity. So it's part of the study, it's part of our assumptions. Where we do identify between now and 2050 sort of staged improvements that need to be required, that's advice that we give to funders, obviously primarily the government and Department for Transport. So probably in summary, it is central to all of our strategies now going forward. And that was part of the, I guess, the purpose of having that target is so that we can focus the minds. I mean, I suppose recognising a committee like this, the passenger needs tend to be the ones which, you know, are uppermost in, you know, in the public's mind and members' mind, but freight is certainly not something that's being overlooked. Although it's not in this patch, we've just recently completed a piece of work in the Anglia area. So looking at the Essex Thames side, freight actually comes first in that particular study because of the nature of it. So probably just give some reassurance on that. The point you mentioned about the digital signalling, I think you mentioned at one point. Yeah, so for the East Coast Main Line, which I think that's most relevant, there is a programme in place there. So the long-term strategy for that does take into account the potential benefits that that will give to services in the long term. So as part of the modelling that's done on East Coast Main Line choices does take into account the extra reliability we'd expect from that. But it's important to recognise that, you know, it's a new technology. Undoubtedly, there will be benefits. Until the whole system's delivered, it's impossible to make very clear predictions and to make assumptions that there could be transformative benefits. That's got to be realised when the programme's being developed. Those are the ones I'll address. Perhaps if I hand over to-
Well, I think a lot of what you talk around network performance probably relates more to the East Coast Main Line and the LNER timetable, which I'm perhaps not best positioned to answer. But what I can say for EMR, we have modelled our timetable, we've made a lot of changes to make sure performance is better. So just to give some examples, at the minute, a Leicester to Lincoln service, when it gets to Lincoln, often two or three minutes later will then form another service to Peterborough. So you could have a problem in the afternoon at Leicester that means that your train in the evening back from Lincoln to Peterborough is late. What we've done is this timetable, we've made the routes self-contained. So Peterborough to Lincoln operates self-contained all day. And likewise, Lincoln to Matlock has been a new timetable, so we're not transferring delays from one route to the other. We've done a lot of work on turnarounds. Crewe is a big problem in the current timetable. We have turnarounds of 10 minutes there. And if a train's late, it'll either be late coming back or get turned around at Stoke-on-Trent. We've now got 45-minute turnarounds at Crewe there. So there's enough there to absorb any delay that you might get on a normal day. And we've done a lot of work on Nottingham platforming. Nottingham platform is key. If Nottingham platform doesn't work, the whole of the regional timetable doesn't work. That is absolutely fundamental. And you can see that at the minute where if a train from Lincoln to Leicester is late through Nottingham, it will delay the following cross-country service to Birmingham. But also then the Norwich to Liverpool service behind it. And if that train's late, that's then transferring delays all the way across the north-west of England. So we have modelled the timetable, we've done a lot of work on our timetable to make sure that we have resolved those problems.
Chairman, if I may just come back on one small point. I think sort of fundamental this, and we talk about this when we're considering our own public transport offering, is reliability of services. If the services are not reliable, people will not use them because they can't guarantee that they're going to get home. So I think for me, those are the really key takeaways here. If we're looking to improve the network, improve the infrastructure, improve the offering, it must be reliable. Otherwise, you will not get the customers. So thank you.
Thank you. Is it councillor Clark? Is there a question?
Thank you. Facilities and technology. I was born and bred in Lincoln and I can remember the two railway gates that we used to have and you used to walk uptown. Used to be a man in the office, in this little unit, used to come out, open and close the gates. Then technology came in and, you know, just on the crossing in Lincoln, it's unbelievable the amount of time that people will wait there. And what I asked for last time was could a display be put up to say how long you're going to be waiting? Then people could use the bridge, if the bridge was working. On Saturday, I was in town and there was a disabled lady, used a lift to go up the lift. She went along and then the lift on the other side to bring her down wasn't working. So she had to go back, go down the lift again. And by the time she got down there, the gates had gone up and gone down again. So she just had to wait. But it seems a shame that when we go on about technology, the technology of a lift in a railway bridge can't even be working. And I'd just like to know, you know, your views on that.
I'm unsure if Jonathan wants to add anything too, but from an operator's point of view, just echoing what we were conceding, the example you've given would be incredibly frustrating to that particular lady, was it? And frustrating. I'm unsure, I'm not technically minded in the suggestion he's come up with, as a layman, that that would seem to make a lot of sense if it was an indication of time, actually. I think that could manage expectations when you're waiting and perhaps ease some of the frustration. So I can certainly see the logic of that, although, as I say, that's not a commitment, because I'm unsure what the technical solution might be, but I can certainly understand what he's saying. But yeah, just echoing what we talked about earlier on, which was just the frustration of the level crossings, we can certainly appreciate, but we, as operators, as infrastructure leads, management of that, we just, safety is absolutely the priority. We don't want anyone getting hurt on them. And then when they are down, we just absolutely commit to keeping them to the minimum time that we absolutely can. That's probably from an operator's point of view. I don't know if Network Rail have any...
Yeah, thank you for that councillor Clark. And can I just reiterate what George said, and I'm extremely sorry to hear about the condition that the constituent or the lady who's stuck in the lift for, it's not acceptable. And I will look into that point. With regards to your display sign of how long you're going to be at the barium for, I'm, like George, I'm not an engineer by trade, but I will take that back, and I will look into that and provide a written update answer to you on that proposal you've made.
Yeah, where I got the idea from, obviously, was the bus company can do it.
I absolutely take your point. As I say, I will take it away and come back to you with an answer.
Thank you. Councillor Christopher.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation there. I'm wondering whether councillor Clark's idea might ruin the fun that I have with my daughters, where we sometimes decide to stay and others will use the bridge and see who gets to the other side. But of course, we're all capable of using the stairs, and there's obviously a lot of people in the community that aren't. So something like that, you know, I'd be very keen to see that being addressed. And actually, having a timer on there does seem like a pretty elegant solution to that problem, to let people decide whether they're going to use the bridge or not. I want to come back to what was said in one of the earlier parts by, I think it was Neil. He mentioned obsolete equipment. It feels like we're past the point of when this should have been addressed, if it's already obsolete. And that then begs the question, how much other obsolete equipment is there out there on the rest of the lines around the county? And what risk does that pose to the public when things are getting past their best, when it, you know, when it comes to this equipment? You know, this is key safety elements here. And although I am agreed, I'm sure it's a lot more cost effective to use pulleys and cables and whatever else. I mean, we are moving into modern times, but again, from what I heard there, it sounded like actually this is something that should have been done a long time ago, and it was missed. So that's a concern for me and surely for passengers. On the other side of that, as somebody that, you know, I often check the train prices, but haven't recently, it does seem like actually the routes to London have improved. You know, I've been online and I've had a look, the prices are a lot more affordable now for an individual traveller than they were five to six years ago. There's a lot more options on it. But we're still weak when it comes to cross-country travel, Manchester, you know, going up to Newcastle. If you want to go up to Glasgow, you're talking a six-hour journey potentially, and quite a lot of money as well. And just to come back on something that councillor Vernon touched on as well, I love theatre. You know, I love going down to London to catch a show occasionally if the opportunity arises, and treating my wife to a meal or whatever else, or her treating me, as it often is the case. Good luck doing that on the train. I mean, we can get to London in good time, we can maybe have a few hours, a couple of cocktails down there, and make our way into a theatre, watch a show. How do we get back? Because by the time those shows are finished, there's no trains that are going to bring us home. So are we expected to then to stay overnight? Well, that makes it a much more expensive journey. So it does feel like, you know, this has been initially brought in to help commuters and to help the economic element. But actually, there are a lot of other benefits for us being able to get to the capital city, and I do find it odd that we haven't got those late night trains. And it might be like the subway system in London, that actually you've got repairs that need to be done over certain hours, and I understand that. But it would be helpful if there was just one later journey back from London back to the city, and actually from most major cities, those later connecting trains, if that was something that could be done. Because at the moment, it completely writes off train journeys for me, and that forces me to have to maybe not have those cocktails and drive. So, thank you. Mocktails instead, yeah.
Hi. Yeah, I think I've had a few questions from various people, so I'll try and address them. The first, obsolescence. Yeah, yeah. It is a major part of a, I mean, I'm the route engineer, but it's the route asset manager. You know, money was my title, so I managed these assets, all the signalling assets, on the middle and main line route. And obsolescence is a big part of our renewals plans, of our updating plans, of our minor works plans. Very rarely causes a safety issue. It's more about procurement, it's stuff that's outdated that we cannot, you know, no longer buy in great quantities, which is what I refer to about the technology that we specified for the original Swindaby re-signalling scheme. It was based upon adding to technology that we've already got in Lincoln. Now, that technology in Lincoln is absolutely, you know, spot on. It's not a problem, it's not an issue. With plenty of spares and with people working on replacement sort of systems for that, it's difficult to procure in quantity to add on to that. And we do know that it's, you know, it's 20, 30, 40 years old, so why would we put that in? Why would we not put cutting-edge technology in? Cutting-edge technology in, there's far more reliable, available, and efficient, because ideally it's cheaper because you're using less components. So yeah, obsolescence is a problem, but we do have obsolescence strategies in Network Rail that we address it bit by bit where we can. So that's obsolescence. As for E T C S, I think that the plan for E T C S digital on that particular line, I think in the PowerPoint said 2045, that's when we're coming, and that's based a lot on the technology that will be available and the train fitments of digital for the particular trains, both freight and passenger that use that line. But with digital, well, I think I had a question on line speed increase. With digital, that may provide opportunity to look at line speed increase. I know we did speak before about passive provision for line speed increase to take it from 50 to, I believe, 75 mile an hour. This was in a partnership with a government-backed partnership or sponsorship partnership, and that funding was withdrawn in the latest statement. So, you know, we've no intention, or we've no plans in place of increasing that line speed at present from the current 50 mile an hour. Finally, Swindaby signal box. Yeah, well, this is listed as a heritage building. We will possibly look at moving it. It will need to move to be able to build a bigger crossing on Swindaby, so it will be recited. But of course, we do have an obligation to maintain, look after and upkeep this while ever it's in Network Rail's care, like all the other abandoned, well, abandoned is a strong word, but all the other vacant wooden signal boxes, sort of on the heritage lines out there, where we've re-signalled into major signalling centres, we do keep them. The preferable option, actually, is to try and get a heritage outfit to come in and actually remove it and cite it on a heritage railway somewhere. That way it can be used and utilised by future generations. I think that was all the question that was levied at me specifically for Network Rail, but please do shout up if you want more clarification on any of them points.
Thank you. I think that answered most of the questions. Did you want to come in with...
There was just a bit on the London services that you talked about. It's difficult for us to give a complete answer, because the primary provider of direct services between Lincoln and London is L N E R, a different operator to ourselves. We do provide two early morning services, East Midlands Railway. But what we are looking to do with the December 25 timetable change is complement that L N E R service. So I believe it goes every second hour, the L N E R train from Lincoln down to London, King's Cross. And in that second hour, Chris has worked really hard with planning colleagues to enable a Lincoln to Peterborough train that then connects to other operators from Peterborough into London, King's Cross. So admittedly not a direct service, but it gives that almost clock face repeatability of if you get to the station, and I'm not, I don't, you all know the hour, but I don't know the hour, but if you get to the station at 19 minutes past, whatever it might be, it's either an L N E R direct to London, or it's our train service to Peterborough, that then is a single change on to London, King's Cross, to at least give some simplicity, I suppose, to the passengers of Lincolnshire, admitting that that's not the ideal scenario that you would like. But it's a move towards trying to get a commonality towards that connectivity to London. That perhaps doesn't answer your question completely, but at least move some way towards it.
Thank you. And councillor Sheard.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, first of all, it's great to hear about the proposed improvements. What I would say is, having proposed them, we do want to see them. I think we can all agree that rail plays such an important part in tourism, employment, education, keeping people connected. I would just reiterate that it's really important to have avenues whereby the public can come to you and voice their concerns and their suggestions, and that they feel listened to, and also that you find an avenue to share information with them. I think if you can get that up and running, and if you can actually ensure that they are listened to, I think that's where you will actually find your greatest improvements can come, and keeping it affordable, safe, and all the other aspects that they'll bring to you, I think that's where you will actually get the greatest benefit.
It's fine, we've had a nod. And councillor Vernon.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you for your indulgence in letting me come twice. I promise this is only a very quick one, but I'm just sort of obviously considering the bigger picture. And obviously, we've discussed the fact that L N E R are sort of quite a major provider within our area. There's obviously this new fare structure in place from L N E R, where they're abolishing their off-peak and super-off-peak fares. And I'd like to just ask about sort of, obviously, your take as East Midlands Railway, but also sort of whether, how that is going to work and impact. We've talked about the business travellers, which are obviously using during the day, which the majority of the changes we've talked about are geared towards the more frequent services. But when we hear about the leisure travellers, who are looking at sort of late night and off-peak and super-off-peak services, that is going to directly affect those. So I just wondered if you had a view on those. Thank you.
Yeah, you're quite right. L N E R had that pricing trial that they had on the East Coast Main Line. We weren't part of that trial, East Midlands Railway, but I think it's common knowledge across industry, the wider public, that fares are very complicated for passengers to understand, and that can then be a hurdle for people becoming passengers and travelling on the railway with confidence. So yeah, from an E M R point of view, we stand ready to work with G B R as that, Great British Railways, as that comes into fruition. And as a case in point, that we're trying to, it's not similar to L N E Rs, but it's a ticket trial of sorts. We're doing a digital pay-as-you-go. You might have seen in the media between Leicester, Nottingham and Derby, in partnership with Cross Country Trains, another operator, to throw into the picture. But yeah, that again, it's a tap-on, tap-off using your mobile phone, and it tracks your movements with GPS. So yeah, that's not me suggesting that as a solution, but it's us trying to be innovative and look at new ways that passengers can have more simple fares. But I think the thing that will truly unlock that is when we get to Great British Railways coming into formal existence, and us as a partner operator with all the other operators in the country, perhaps get to a more uniform solution, whatever that might look like. I'm not privy to that, unfortunately, I wish I was. But I'm intrigued. So I'm a Derby lad, Great British Railway is going to be based in Derby. We're still waiting to find out where even that might be. But yeah, I'm as intrigued as anyone to see what that might look like, and completely understand. I don't want to get too candid, but when my cricket friends are tapping me up at the pub, asking me, would this train get me in, and what's the permits on this, and am I going to be okay on this ticket? I can, we almost become institutionalised, but for Joe Blog's public, it is very confusing, so I understand exactly what you're saying.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councillor Sheard.
Thank you, chairman. Just one thing to come back. Innovation is great. We need to make sure that, one, it works, and we also need to make sure that we do keep some manning at the stations, because there are people who that innovation will be a step too far.
I thought that might prick a few ears up, so I can reassure her that whilst this trial's taking place, all the usual methods of purchasing tickets remain open. Ticket officers aren't threatened by this particular trial or anything like that. But as the words left in my mouth, I thought that might concern somebody. So yeah, just to reassure, that's not an issue on this occasion, but completely accept what you're saying.
Wonderful. If there's no other further questions, I just want to make a few just comments. We've heard how important Spalding Station is to get back from London. Could we have an update on the Spalding to Lincoln Sunday service? We also would like to know, can we make more use of our coastal regions for tourism, work, health and wellbeing? You know, if we can't get, you know, it'd be lovely to be able to go from my residence, especially from Spalding to Skegness even, on a Sunday, or even stay over Saturday night would be amazing. I think councillor Christopher is absolutely right. City-to-city connections should be more or less 24 hours a day. It's all right saying that we can get to London, but we can't get home again. And, you know, it's very great that we can get to Spalding, but councillor Christopher then can't get home from Spalding, and he's going to have to spend an evening in Spalding, which is, as enjoyable as it may be, he would like to get home. So I think there are some further ways we can actually connect better to the region, but I do thank you all for very honest and complete answers, and thank you to everybody in the chamber for those questions. I will leave it there. Sunday service, just come back to us, you know, would be lovely to know when that's going to be looked at. As we have no other further questions, I would like to suggest a proposal that I move that the committee endorse the report, the presentations, that our satisfaction and thanks be accorded for the opportunity for a very informative debate, as well as for the assurance received by officers and our guest speakers on matters and issues highlighted. And I ask that the comments from today's discussion be cascaded across relevant teams and shared with the portfolio holder for their information and relevant actioning. Also, as per members' requests, I ask that the summary of the questions and answers from the debate should be shared with members ahead of the production of the formal meeting minutes. Does anyone dissent to that proposal? If so, please raise your hand. Thank you. That is agreed. I would now like to take a moment to suggest that we have a comfort break, and therefore any members, public that are here, can actually depart from the chamber. Would I ask you to be back by 11:40? So we'll give it 10 minutes, I'll see you back in the chamber at 11:40. Thank you. We will move over to agenda item number six, Highways Performance Report, Year Six, Quarter One, that's the first of April to the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-five. This report sets out the performance of the highway service, including the Highways Maintenance Scheme Update, Lincolnshire Highways Performance Report, and Highways Complaints Report. It is asked that we review and comment on the details of the performance contained in the report, and that we recommend any changes or actions to the executive councillor for highways and transport through our debate. This report will be presented by Mr Jonathan Evans, Head of Highways Client, over to you.
Thanks, chairman, good morning councillors, and members of the public that have joined us remotely. I'll attempt to keep this update really short, I came for the corp for performance to the last scrutiny committee, so I'll just highlight some of the key changes. But in terms of the performance measures, I'll start there, for the Alliance, which are the ones that are the overseeing, overarching ones for Lincolnshire County Council, Balfour BT, Colas and WSP, we scored eighty-six point five this quarter, that's down from last quarter. The client measures, we monitor ourselves as an independent party within the contracts, we scored eighty-one this quarter, that's down ever so slightly from eighty-three last quarter. Moving on to the Highway Works Term Contract, which is operated by Balfour BT, that's the largest sort of, in terms of spend, in terms of delivery of works, that scored ninety-one point six this quarter, that's up from eighty-seven point two last quarter. Professional Services Contract, operated by WSP, scored eighty-two this quarter, that's up again from seventy-eight last quarter, and then the Traffic Signals Contract, operated by Colas, scored seventy-nine point five, that's considerably down from last quarter at ninety-seven. So the areas to note are the Performance Indicator Seven, that's in the Professional Services Contract, has fallen below the minimum service level this quarter, a review has highlighted some training requirements, and this will be delivered in quarter two, and then performance will be monitored throughout the year. We've decided not to implement an improvement plan formally there, but the sort of recurrence is one that we've had in this contract previously, so we, we know how to correct it, it's largely to do with training with the teams, and it's identifying members of staff that probably come to us new in the service. The other one to note is Performance Indicator Two, that's within the Colas Contract, operational review and financial, you complete within given timescales, has fallen below our minimum performance level. This is a new measure that we brought in for year six to address areas or highlight areas of the service that we felt were, was underperforming, so what's happened here is Colas by agreement have introduced this measure, which I think is really positive, they didn't have to do this, they've done this by agreement, and what we thought would have been an area that is, is sort of lacking performance-wise, it has scored zero. So what we'll do now is bring that back to the scrutiny committee, identify areas that we can improve, and hopefully through the rest of the year we may see improvement there. Okay, moving on to one point two, contract-specific updates, so the Highway Works Contract has been extended to the thirty-first of March thirty-two, this is just an update, this hasn't been done since the last meeting. The Professional Services Contract has been extended to the thirty-first of March twenty-twenty-eight, and the Traffic Signals Contract has not been extended, and a new re-procurement process has recently completed, with the council awarding the contract to SWARCO. The contract is due to go live on the first of April twenty-twenty-six, and an initial term of six years with the option to extend a further six years available. Over the last couple of months, we've had mobilisation, mobilisation meetings with SWARCO, and we've commenced meetings with the team that actually operate the contract day-to-day, so that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. The reason we're doing that is because we want to explain to them the background, the history of why we've made the decisions we have in terms of that Colas extension, they will have entitlements under TUP to transfer to the new provider, and we just want to make sure that process is done as smoothly as possible, from a council perspective, because they are key to us delivering that service. Move now on to the Highway Works Term Contract, which is operated by Balfour BT, and I'll just jump in at the challenges and improvements. We're really pleased to see the score of ninety-one point six this quarter, that's the highest on contract to date since the contract started in twenty-twenty. Positive areas in terms of scoring are the reactive service, that's also the pothole series six three hundred as we know it, emergency works and street lighting service. Two other aspects I wanted to highlight for the committee to discuss was the wider highway service challenges, so the service has encountered a number of sites that are showing signs, showing signs of rapid deterioration that have been triggered from ground movement in areas of the network susceptible to drought damage. The failing mechanism has typically been significant haunch failures and longitudinal cracking appearing within the carriageway service. The service is needed to react quite quickly to some of these in terms of safety repairs, and wherever possible we're trying to do a first-time fix. However, there are some sites where we'll need to make safe and do a long-term design, that's trial pits, and understand exactly what's happening before we go and fix. To date, those sites, whilst we've got a variety of volume, it might be two hundred or three hundred sites of that type of nature, the major ones, you know, the, on our significant A and B roads are likely to be in the region of one point five million, so that's a pressure to the service that we weren't anticipating at the start of this year. We'll continue to collate that information, and I suggest we probably bring that back later in the year, just to show the scale of the impact of this prolonged dry period over the summer. What that's going to do is likely create a budget pressure or impact our strategic objectives of holding the steady state and our asset condition, and in trying to improve our unclassified network. The other item I wanted to highlight was an update on the Pothole Pro Trial, so the service has arranged for a second trial of the Pothole Pro, that's now started as of last week, so on the third of September it commenced doing some jobs around the Louth area. The Pothole Pro vehicle and sporting gang will be based at a number of highway depots throughout the year, and we'll be monitoring performance metrics to make sure that it's, it's adding value ultimately. What we've tried to do, we had a previous iteration of the trial that was based in Horn Castle, and we operated it very much as a sort of a standard pothole gang. At the moment, the Pothole Pro second trial has been targeting into what we call reactive patches, so they're a little bit larger in scale, and we think if it's going to work, that'll be the place where it adds value. I'd also like to highlight the Highways and Transportation Scrutiny Committee has been invited to a meeting on the eighteenth of September, that's to have a sort of a demonstration day of the vehicle, just to show that we're trying to look at different ways of delivering our service. Move now on to one point five, Professional Services Contract, operated by WSP, just one, one aspect to highlight, during the first four years of this contract, the scrutiny committee will be aware that we really struggle to recruit positions hard to, you know, sort of specialisms such as drainage, street lighting engineers, we really struggle to recruit them. Within the Performance Indicators for WSP, the one that reflects this now is scoring ten out of ten, and that's targeted to fill requested vacancies within three months, so that's a really positive shift in position of the, of the council and our ability to react to service demand. Move on to item one point six, Traffic Signals Term Contract, the Colas update, and again just running, running, moving to challenges and improvements, we've had some, a number of people leave the authority, or leave the, the contract, three members of staff have left, that was updated in the last performance report, that's up three of a team of twelve, so it does cause us issues. Pleased to say that the, that recruitment is now complete, and those are positions have been backfilled. been backfilled. And I guess it's what we'll be doing over this next phase is just making sure with the contractor that they're up to speed. Move now on to Complaints, item three, during quarter one, the highway service received a total of 7,800 Fix My Street inquiries and 8,300 calls and emails to the customer service centre. The customer relations team received a total of 47 contacts within quarter one from individuals wishing to give feedback, report issues or complain about the highway service, which equates to 0.29% of all contacts received. And again, just for context, historical figure of less than one has typically been considered as sort of good in, in, in what we do as a service. Potentially we'll need to rebase line that going forward because we've seen a couple of month quarters now where we've been in that good position. The number of complaints entering the formal process has remained static across the last two quarters and again, that just shows some of the good work that's going on in relation to complaints. The top three reasons for complaints are potholes being 13 of the 47, the second was scheduled maintenance and after that was verge maintenance. Probably scheduled maintenance is coming off the back of a busy period of work that we do over the summer months and then verge maintenance, obviously it's relation to grass cutting, visibility displays, those aspects of the service that we're doing. The actual themes within those three top areas related to insufficient or lack of communication, so as a service, we're always trying to improve that and we'll, we'll take some learnings of things that we can always change or adjust in the way we're doing, but it's just to bring you back to the, the volume that we're getting, it's generally considered as a good position at the moment. Okay, moving on to Highway Service Added Value, this is a section I added, I bring it probably once a year and this is, relates to last financial year's spend. The scale of activity completed within the highway service is often reported in terms of work activity completed, as that is our primary purpose. Whilst this is our key focus, the service in collaboration with the key partners, Balfour's, Colas and WSP, were able to deliver additional value to the Lincolnshire and its residents. The service has collated some of the key impacts in an infographic that can be found in Appendix E. Between the first of April 24 and 31st of March 25, the partners have delivered approximately 37.5 of social value when measured using the National Themes Outcomes and Measures Framework. Key points are 97% of the workforce is considered as local employees. When we talk about local employees, we consider that as Lincolnshire County Council plus 20 miles. We've appointed through our external partners 11 apprentices, two from Lincolnshire County Council are here today, both Edward and Theo, who were here previously or earlier. They, it just shows a commitment really, we're trying to build our own, it's something that we're trying to do and make sure those skillsets are with the service. Also on the infographic, we've got two care leave replacements that we've worked with, the children's side of the authority and we continue to do our community volunteering. So in conclusion, the performance reported for quarter one shows an improvement in two of our five reporting areas, three down. Individual areas of low performance are being investigated and addressed where necessary. In addition to the specific performance indicators, the service continues to pursue further initiatives to tackle areas of low performance and is consistently striving to implement value for money savings across the wider service. Funding levels for the remainder of 25-26 means that the service forecasts that it will meet the objectives of the highways infrastructure asset management strategy. However, as highlighted within this report and in my update today, the services experience a rapid deterioration of some of the carriageway surfaces at specific locations that have been triggered from ground movement. The committee is asked to review and comment on the detail of the performance contained in the report and recommend any changes or actions to the executive council for highways, transport and IT. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Jonathan for your report. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. councillor Robinson, do we have any speakers?
Yeah councillor Reeve.
Thank you for the report Jonathan. You say on page 30 that the level of complaints post last two quarters is 65% down on the previous year. As a new councillor, the number one thing that I get challenged with is what can you do about the state of the highways and everything? Now, this isn't from me, this is from my precious, I appreciate, I've got seen inside sight now that how hard everybody is working to achieve what we want, but I just question that the, the complaints are down on the previous two quarters because I wonder are people becoming just resigned to the fact that there isn't the money, there isn't the resources and they're just not complaining that they haven't got the desired outcome that they got from, wanted from the previous report of a complaint or something? Or is it just that things are getting better but the general perception isn't that way? Because that's, as new councillors, that's not what we're picking up. Thank you.
Thanks for that question, a really good question and it's something hopefully I will do my best to answer here. In terms of the complaints that we receive, without speaking to members of the public, I think they're normally generated off the back of an incident or an issue that's probably localised in nature, so whether it's a, a pothole or a visibility display where the service hasn't done it as well as the resident may have wanted to, or we have, haven't got to a, you know, a job at the right time. So I think those instances across the service have improved in terms of our responsiveness and our minor backlogs of reactive faults. I think you're, you're absolutely right to highlight in Lincolnshire, we've got a problem of the perception of our members of the public in relation to our condition. So our condition, when we compare ourselves nationally, our As and Bs are probably similar to other authorities, but our unclassified road network is less than average. I think if we were to ask or poll members of the public, as we do in something like our NHT survey, which we'll be bringing back to this committee later in the year, the perception is still that our roads aren't in a good enough condition. So I think, I think that will be the narrative, you know, in terms of the question asked, the, the reactive, the incidence of sort of complaints are dropping, but I am certain as you are that your inbox will be full of people saying, you know, the, the level or the condition of the roads aren't in, in the state that they need to be. Over the last few years, the condition of the unclassified road network has been improving and we've received our condition data in its raw format the last couple of weeks and again, that trend has continued. So last year we were reported 23.2% of the network is requiring maintenance, that's still a big figure. Nationally, I would say the average of other authorities is about 15%. Our score improvement over the last year has dropped it down to 21.4% of the network, so it's a 1.8% improvement. So we, we've still got a perception issue in that our roads are improvement, are improving, but I don't think our members of the public perceive that and that's probably something again nationally that's happening, other authorities' networks are dropping. So we, we feel like we're doing the right things but we're, we could always do more I guess and that's, that will be funding related ultimately.
Thank you.
Yep councillor Clark.
Thank you. Morning Jonathan, three quick questions. On the verge maintenance, I was surprised you said it was because of grass cutting and that, because the complaints I get is about cars parking on the verge. I understand you'll come back and you'll say that the verge don't belong to that household, but when it's all, you know, muddy and getting dragged into the house, people complain to me about that. So I wonder is it a policy now, or would there be a policy to say that when that happens, you know, we'll look to address it to solve the problem? Because the only conclusion the residents have is put wooden stakes in the verge which the council then come and take out. The second one is on the Fix My Street, it says the number of contacts is 7,796. How many of those have been completed? And the last one, so I told you there's quick questions, the last one is on the pothole new machine, could you tell me at the present, how much it costs per square metre to repair? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clark. In terms of the verge maintenance question, it's an ongoing problem and it has been for a number of years outside residential properties. We try and take a balanced approach, we're working with members and the residents, we can take steps to enforce, whether that's, you know, sort of a, a formal bollard or a, or tree planting sometimes might be the best thing to do, but equally, I can, it's, it's a hard place to be in as a service sort of thing, to pitch it at the right level. We could try and move cars on, but that's often going to move the problem around the corner to another resident and I guess it's trying to work with that community to see what's the best thing to do. I don't think we have a formal policy of, as such, but we can intervene at a number of levels, a few there is, is an example of it. It'd be potentially one for the scrutiny committee to discuss longer term about how, how much one way or the other, they, we, we'd like to push, like to push the service, knowing that there probably is never the perfect answer. In, in communities where there is normally two or three car owners now, if, there is pressure for parking, sometimes that is on the verge. We will interact with those verge locations if there's a safety defect or so if there's a big rut or something that we see as an issue, we'll, we'll do repair works there, but I guess working with the members and the residents locally to try and make sure the community's on board with the final solution, maybe that's the best place to be. But happy to work with you on that one to find the specific location and maybe we bring that back for a discussion and say what we did or what we could do. Next one was the Fix My Street data. In terms of the volume that we receive, we are issuing as a service more than, more jobs than we receive inquiries for. So of the 7,300-ish Fix My Street inquiries and the total of the CSC, our officers of the highway, of the service, whilst they interact and deal with those inquiries, are raising more jobs to the contractor. That's from our own safety inspections. So we'll, we'll be issuing something like 20 to 25,000 jobs per quarter, whereas we receive probably around 15,000 jobs. I can get you some data and I'd probably take that as an action to say of the 7,300 in this quarter, how much we acted on, because there'll be some in there that was an inquiry or maybe didn't relate to the council, or it was a pothole not at or deemed as a safety[1317.08][1317.08]intervention. So there'll probably be a blend of information and responses within that, but hopefully that sort of initial response gives you a feel for, for where we're at. In terms of the Pothole Pro, so as I say, we're doing this as a second trial, we brought it in, probably in 2021, we had it on the contract for nine weeks and it was based out of Horn Castle. We set that Pothole Pro to work on as if it was a normal pothole reactive gang. A normal reactive gang might be two options, a vehicle, whacker plate, the dealing with small defects. What we found off that initial trial is that it was spending too much of its day travelling and not delivering output. This time, we're focusing it on reactive patching, the ones 20 to 30 metres squared in, in size and in terms of that output per day or that price per metre squared, that's the bit that I can't answer just yet. What we're trialling through this period is, is this bit of equipment better than its equivalent bit of kit? Those equivalent bits of kit might be something like a Bobcat skid steer or a multi hog, they're bits of equipment that will be doing works of a larger scale. It all depends on the volume of work and the, the output it's doing per day. So I can share in a commercially sensitive way, some of the prices that we pay for something like a Pothole Pro per day, but in terms of the metres squared rate, it'll all depend on the, the output or volume. Potentially that's something that we'll take away with democratic services and see what information I can give you that's disclosable, that isn't sort of commercially sensitive. Hopefully that answers your questions.
Thank you councillor Sheard.
Thank you. With regards to Fix My Street, I think one of the biggest frustrations that I come across from the public is that they go on, they take the photo of the pothole, they submit it, they don't expect to have to go along that stretch of road photographing and submitting every single pothole in the space of a few metres and they get very frustrated when people come along, they fix the one that they've reported, but they leave various others behind. Whether the Pothole Pro, if we do decide to adopt it, can get on top of that issue, I'm not quite sure, but I do think that we maybe need to look at our processes to see how we can rectify that because if you have a look at the potholes we fix in this manner, they certainly don't have a longevity. We fix a pothole and leave one beside it that is of a certain depth, all that happens is the pothole that we fixed basically gets churned up by the wheels of the vehicles and then becomes an issue again. So I do think that is a process that we do need to look at. A second thing, if I may come in Chair, is just very quickly, looking on page 40, I see that the Alliance score for quarter one has slightly reduced and one of the factors that is stated is bad publicity for the Spalding Western Relief Road Bridge. What I would say around that is, again, it's a learning curve, if we had actually given information out to the public right from the start and being open and honest with them, the negativity wouldn't have formulated as bad as it currently is and we could have negated a lot of the, the negative comment. I think information to the public in all aspects is key and the sooner we can give that, the better.
Thank you councillor. In terms of the first question, Fix My Street, yes, we are aware of frustration sometimes from members of the public in terms of when they identify a defect, our officer will sometimes go out or assess it in their safety inspection, we'll be raising defects one for one in our fault service. The Balfour BT gangs and our officers have the ability to inspect wider than just that one, we encourage it. What could be happening in some instances is that the intervention or fault of a nearby defect isn't in line with our policy and I know that's sometimes hard for a resident or even scrutiny committee to understand, it's just making sure that our policy, our intervention levels are of a, of the right standard. We try to make that sensible call when we're given that dilemma, but equally, there's a lot of the network that are, where there's faults less than our intervention level, so it will instantly create a budget pressure for the service. We allow Balfour BT, the contractor, to identify their own defect within 30 metres, if it's within that policy depth and also a traffic management setup. So we, we're really cautious about trying to intervene with that and maybe that's a discussion point that we bring at the, when we bring our highways infrastructure asset management plan next, or is it November scrutiny committee, where we set those thresholds and targets. There's some proposals that we're bringing, but maybe we want to have a bit more of a discussion about what's best, but instantly we create a budget pressure if we identify a fault level that's nearby that isn't of that safety depth.
Sorry, may I just come back on that point? So I myself have been on Fix My Street in recent months and been along a stretch of road where I've literally gone along, taken a photo, made a report, gone along, taken a photo, made a report and then I've attended when the contractors have been present and they've fixed it, fixed certain ones and as they've gone past one, I've actually gone to the contractor and sort of commented, oh, maybe you missed one and they turn, they have turned around and said time constraints and that they're not allowed to fill them. So I think it's something to review and maybe it's better communications to the contractors.
Yeah, I'll take that action away. They do have that ability within the contract because we drafted it, I drafted it, we'll make sure that's reiterated. It potentially could be some supply chain partners that maybe are coming to the contract that aren't fully up to speed and sort of briefed on our service, so we'll make sure that's done. In terms of resource programming, again, that's linked into the high end, we try to be really efficient, so our reactive gangs are scheduled to maybe do seven or eight jobs in the day. They'll have that desire to be efficient by doing those things and what we can't do is sometimes is create floating a programme to do those ad hoc inspections or those ad hoc safety defects, but there's a balance to that, we want to do them, we know that it's more efficient doing it there and then instead of coming back, but equally, it's, it's instantly a budget pressure that the service faces, so it's, it's a fine line. If there's a, the better way of doing it, we will definitely be looking at that. So yeah, have to take them away. And in terms of the spalding, I guess that's just a, a note really, yes, we'll, we'll take that away. If there's any more upfront publicity, Sam Edwards next to me here took that, has brought that to the scrutiny committee in his majors, majors updates for the last four or five years and we've tried to communicate the benefits of it locally, but I don't know if there's anything to add there Sam.
Yeah, I can come in quickly. So the delivery of the Spalding Western Relief Road was articulated in policy documents both through South Holland District Council and through the county council, this is a long-term strategy which is mixed in with delivering five sections, mixed with housing and so forth. Clearly, that hasn't gone out to everybody or not everyone's understood that delivery hence, hence the sort of negative position on that. I think there's more that the county can do to put that messaging out there, but it does need the support from members to allow us to do that. But yeah, there's, there's always been the, the intention of the long-term delivery, we just need the tools to allow us to go out and talk about it more, more fully.
Yep councillor Christopher.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you, chair. The report's super comprehensive, I love it. There's loads and loads of data in there. And to be, to be frank, I think, you know, a lot of what's there makes perfect sense to me overall, which is an oddity in my mind quite often. So there were a couple of elements though, and everyone's talking about the Pothole Pro. So I think I do have one thing I would like to comment on on that, which is that in 2024 Gloucestershire did a sort of trial of a few different options. And it seems odd to me that we're just doing a trial on one machine. And to throw the names of them out there, the road mender, which appears to be a much more environmentally friendly option, the way that it uses old tyres and other things to go through, but also spray injection in combination with a Bobcat, which is something that we're already familiar with. And the results of that, although they're not in tyre declare online, it does seem to suggest that the Pothole Pro was probably the worst of those options when, when you compare it. And it specifically mentions the fact that it's not very good for rural areas, which we are. So, you know, I do think things, you know, if we're going to do a trial, I sort of feel like maybe let's do one, but let's, let's, let's do it better than Gloucester did, would be my, my sort of feedback on that. The other thing I'd like to raise on, I'll touch on as well, because it mentions in the report about the subsidence or problems on Yarborough Hill. There's been a story this weekend, I believe. And I understand, looking at the feedback from the public there, there's quite a lot of people saying, oh, it's always looked like that, whatever else. But of course, we've got a play park just underneath that area. The idea of that collapsing in on, on children's a bit of a worry for me. And also noting that Lincoln City Council ended up having to do some significant works behind the houses there with their retaining wall that, for whatever reason, hadn't ended up through planning being in ownership. So it went to the crown and the city ended up having to pay quite a substantial amount of money to repair that retaining wall. So I'd like to know a bit more about what we understand is the cause of that damage and, you know, what the risks, or what, you know, what the underlying risks are ultimately.
Thank you councillor Christopher. For the Pothole Pro, as part of the sort of the bringing back or re-initiating the trial in Lincolnshire, we did make contact with other authorities where it's either deemed to be working or not. There are good examples of where the Pothole Pro has been made to work. Staffordshire, for example, have got two operating full-time at the moment. And I think it's just making sure it fits into a work basket and a way of working that's ultimately productive. Gloucestershire, in terms of that report, as you say, trial different approaches. And I just wanted to add really that maybe that's something that we're, we're not the best at in terms of our publicity. We, we have road mender, that product on contract at the moment, interacting with some of our sort of surface level defects. So it's a little bit different to the Pothole Pro in what it can do, but it's, it'll be adding sort of a six mil slurry onto a surface that will be really good in urban areas or areas that are sort of showing cracking deterioration. But it won't be sort of excavating like a Pothole Pro cam. And we equally do, and have done for a number of years now, the spray injection. So we do that through blown sort of chippings and emulsion. And that really works well in our rural communities. So we're doing a lot of the good stuff, but sometimes we're not shouting about it. So other authorities are potentially better in that space than we are in terms of saying what we've done. But keen to take that away and learn from the comments that you're making there because that's something that we need to be getting the committee up to date on and members of the public saying that we are always exploring. What we're doing with the reactive patching solution is comparing, and we've had on contract for the last four or five years, the Skidsteer, Bobcat and stuff like a multi hog. Balfour BT as a contractor have the ability to use whatever solution they want. We've just commercially set it up in terms of the meterage that they've tended in 2020, sort of a metre squared rate. And if Balfours can do it in a more productive way, they will most certainly be doing it. So I think we're always looking to trial new bits of kit and show that we're exploring options. And maybe we need to shout about what we've done in the past, so I'll take that away. In terms of the subsidence on Yarborough Hill, I think that's covered in Sam's majors update. So Sam's, sorry, I'm scribbling down there, so I'm sure he'll give you a thorough update when it comes to that.
Thank you. councillor Wright.
Thank you. Morning Jonathan. I always feel sorry I haven't asked you for questions about complaints, but it's what we get in our postbag. You mentioned earlier about unclassified roads and also the fact that our A and B roads are pretty good. And they are, especially when you go out of county and see some of our neighbouring counties, our roads are actually much better than theirs. But the problem is we've got rural communities and quite often the connectivity between those good roads is the bad roads. So in Ruskin Town, we just had all of Westliffe Road done, thank you very much, it's great. The next day my first email was you turned it into a racetrack, but never mind. But to get to the A15 by the shortest route, you've got to go down an unclassified road. Now, at the other end, where it meets the A15, fantastic piece of new tarmac where the junction was improved and it comes so far up, comes so far up to the most dangerous part of the unclassified road, which soon I will be going on record as saying it's now borderline becoming dangerous. Because it's subsiding and not, and not in one direction, multiples, you literally bounce up and down the road. And for motorcycles or small cars, it will actually deviate in your direction of travel. It will actually make you move if there's uncompried traffic and you try to do anything more than 20, 30 mile an hour, which actually should be able to, you should be able to use the road to its speed limit, you can't. So the fact is we've got two cracking bits of tarmac connected by an unclassified road that's becoming a nightmare. And that's why we get complaints, I think, because they don't see the good work, they see what the problems are in between. Then we come to complaints and obviously the report is, you know, it's got some really good news in it. And I have asked this previously before, is that obviously we see percentages, we see satisfaction rates. And I've said, but what does that translate into? So the fact again, in my village, and you know, it's actually my road and round the corner, the complaint came in over a year ago about substandard road treatment. There was a top dressing that failed, we know it failed, it was admittance, it was failed. I was encouraged to tell my residents that actually those failures are noticed and that fines aren't just collected and at some stage work does carry on. This is carried out to, to, to rectify. So it's very hard at the moment to be able to look out the window and see all the scars in the road from where the top dressing failed and where the broadband contractor dragged the machinery and left scars which filled with water. And through the corner of my eye, I'd see a cracking piece of new top dressing on the road round the corner. To go further around to see there's an even better top dressing which is done to a higher standard. But the road where it failed, we're still waiting all this time to see what actually happens with regards to remedials. So, you know, if we're going to see complaints, as I said before, it would be nice to see where those complaints are justified and admitted. What's the timescale for actually putting that work right? Because I now look to my residents as somebody who's making false promises.
Thank you councillor Wright. In terms of the network position and where you see it in terms of condition, yeah, I agree. Our A B's and U's, our B's, U's are still somewhere where we, where we feel like with members that we want to improve and members of the public. We've seen that drought damage deteriorate over that time. And you mentioned cracking and subsidence. I think Ruskin Town is, is just outside of that area of drought or drought damage susceptible layer. And it might be something that Rachel, if you're able to just present the, I don't know if you've got the drought damage susceptible map, if it's of interest to the scrutiny committee, we collate data of our, what we see as superficial geology. And we're trying to interact and learn from the cracking that we're seeing here for a prolonged summer. Obviously it's creating a budget pressure, but we, we map in our asset management system areas that are susceptible for it. And those are areas of clay, silt, sand and sometimes peat, where we see these sort of rapid deterioration. I guess from a, the random sites that you're talking about there, I think we could probably take them away and have a look at them, make sure that we've, we're doing the right things strategically. In terms of the defect correction period, we have 12 months within our contracts as standard. If we've notified a defect, that is the timescale that the contractor is liable or warranty for that material, unless it's a surface dressing, which is two. If we've issued it as a defect and we have instructed the contractor to interact with it, they should be there to correct that fault. So I'll make sure that that's picked up as a little audit, I guess, and make sure we're doing the right things there. So yeah, just on the diagram here, this is the, a map of Lincolnshire where it'll show all the superficial geology. I want to say superficial geology, these are probably our, the core outer layer of the earth that's been there for the last two to three million years, from probably the last sort of ice age. You'll see down in the sort of the Fens region that we've got the alluvium, clay, silt and sands there of a time when, you know, water was draining off the sort of the main land and it was sort of a wash or wet area. What you'll see in the dotted red lines are what we believe is our drought susceptible area. And what we're trying to do is correlate the schemes that we're seeing off, as I updated in our report this time, and overlay it on that map and potentially bring that back to the scrutiny committee. But off the back of what is considered the hottest weather on record, we are seeing a sort of a shrink swell of some of the earth that's underlying. And in cases where we've got an asphalt layer that's normally holding in the moisture, but the embankments either side aren't, and we're seeing that sort of movement either apart to create the cracking or we're seeing sometimes in the Fens areas, we have these things called rodans, which are historical sort of alluvium waterways. And sometimes on a long stretch of road where they're going across the road, you'll see those dips and depressions. And sadly, it's happened quite quickly this summer. So we've probably had, you know, a month of deterioration. And we may, we're probably midway through that at the moment where we're seeing movement. So we're just sort of trying to capture that data as best as we can and, and bring that back to understand the scale of it. At the moment, we think our initial safety, making safe is costing somewhere in the region of one to 1.5 million. But the longer term impact on our schemes could be several, you know, five, 10 million over time. So it's a really challenging thing to deal with. We, like probably part of Norfolk, Oxfordshire and Peterborough are the only ones in the UK that have this problem. And it's a problem that a lot of other UK authorities don't face. So it's a challenge when we get it. And when you get the Department of Transport funding formula issued on network length, it's something that we try and say, you know, this is the sort of thing that can happen in Lincolnshire. So it's something that's quite unique. It's likely to potentially see more of it in the future if we have prolonged summers. Sorry, that's a long update and it wasn't probably quite the question you asked, but I will take an action to dig into exactly the, the network length that you're referring to where we potentially have got cracking or a defect where we can intervene with.
Thank you. councillor Vernon.
Thank you chairman, and thank you for that, which I was completely sort of not familiar with at all. So that was really interesting to hear. And if I could just go back to the sort of earlier part of the report, I am concerned about Colas and their figures. And I know that obviously their contract's not been renewed. So I'd like to ask what measures you're putting in place to ensure that they continue to meet their obligations for the next six months until such time as the new provider takes over. I'd also like to talk about recruitment issues. I'm really sorry, my page numbers are not correct today at all. I've already, so I apologize, I can't give page numbers. But we obviously have talked about recruitment issues previously in previous scrutiny man, and this is an ongoing theme. I'm absolutely delighted to welcome the two apprentices to the meeting and hope that this is the start of very many more apprentices coming through. Because I genuinely believe that this is the way to secure our staff for the future. And hopefully you two guys, maybe in Jonathan's chair in a few years' time. So yeah, yeah. When it's gone, okay, yeah, that's fine, sorry. Yeah, just to clarify that point. I always talk about complaints and I'd just like to say again, I note the points that have been made by councillor Sheard and councillor Wright, but I really do feel that 47 complaints out of 16,102 contacts is to be commended. I think it's really good, 0.29%. The point I would make on that is that no complaints would obviously be amazing, but I think we all realise that's entirely unrealistic. I'd just like to look at the, I can't remember this information, I know you have mentioned it previously, but obviously those 47 complaints all now have to enter the formal resolution process, which at what point did that come in? Looking back at our figures that you've provided us with over the last few years, I'd just be interested in the comparison as to the 47 now that all have to go into formal resolution. Or sort of four years ago, I can't quite recall the date, so that would be really helpful to have. I'd also like to commend the response time for emergency works. I think that was really exceptional and actually shows that sort of yes, when it is needed as an emergency, our staff are there and get out and do sort of what is necessary to keep people safe. And then I just, again, sort of my final point, I don't usually go into real specifics regarding my division for obvious reasons that we're here to scrutinise the bigger picture. But looking at the complaints paper, I note that there is an issue with communication still. And I wouldn't sort of normally mention this, but I think it's important to just state, we had some roadworks taking place in my village, we were notified they were taking place on a date, all cars had to be cleared. They didn't take place on that date. They then sent us a letter saying they were coming on another date. They didn't turn up on that date, they actually came earlier than that. And I think that's just a prime example of how frustrated people get when particularly I go round knocking on doors going, you're having work done, make sure your car's out the way so this work can be done. And then they turn up completely unexpected times. So I can understand people's concerns regarding lack of communication. And I would like to know how we can further improve this in the future because it does seem to be a recurring theme in our complaints report. And that's it for me. thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you councillor Vernon. I'll try and do work through them, but let me know if I've missed anything. In terms of the Colas contract, I think as an officer of the council, I, I'm not as concerned on their performance. What we're seeing, I think, is an impact of those three resources handed the notice in and a new measure that we've introduced on an area that is about financial closeout of the contract. So from a member of the public perspective, they won't be seeing an impact. But as an officer, in terms of financial reporting, close down of the contract, dealing with compensation events, that's, it's a frustration, I guess. In terms of the council, it's better, it allows us to budget manage better. But in terms of front-facing public delivery, we're not seeing concerns just yet. So I, I wouldn't want Colas to sort of, it to be viewed negatively. They've, they've, whilst they haven't had the extension, we're not seeing anything in terms of sort of shutting down the service. And if they were, I'd be flagging them. So just wanted to make that statement. In terms of the apprentices, yeah, it's, it's great to see them here today and I'm sure they will be sat here in time. What we've tried to do as a service is put our new apprentices on a rotor. So they're spending two to three months in every part of our service. We did it about 10 to 15 years ago and quite often they're our senior management now who, who did it. And it's one of those things that is too easily to get sort of cut in a budget, sort of pressured area. So it's something that we have reinstigated and yeah, they're doing great so far. And I'm sure they will continue to progress with their qualifications in working within the teams and making those efficiencies. Because you can, once you've got somebody that's worked in multiple areas, you can see, oh, you know, that, they do that, that's a pressure and it links to something else. So it's something that is quite unique and yeah, really pleased to have them here. In terms of complaints, yeah, in a great place, we can always do better. Whilst the numbers are really low, there are themes and the communication one is something that we'll take away. We've got the customer relation strategy that was programmed to be on to date coming next month. That's very high level in terms of how we try and engage. But as part of that, I'll make sure that we are working with the contractors and making sure that we, we get those right first time deliveries. It's where we want to be, we want to be automated and making sure we're scheduled and programmed. They're probably worth looking into that one. I know it is a, a local example, but we can learn from it and make sure we understand at least what failed there. Is there anything I've missed there?
Chairman, just also regarding when complaints had to enter the formal resolution process of matter of course, sort of initially, just because I was interested for the comparison with the figures in the report, thank you.
Yeah, so I think that was about 18 months ago that we had to formally report them and escalate them up. What we did have was sort of an informal phase where we could interact with that complaint and deal with it before it was sort of logged. So I think it was about 18 months ago. I will confirm if that's different though, after the meeting, if I'm wrong.
Chairman, may I just come back on that point then? So the figures for 2223 with the number of complaints were outside the period where complaints had to enter the formal resolution process. So obviously just looking at the direct quarter comparison for 2223, so there were 125 complaints that entered formal resolution at that point, whereas there may have been a numerous other number of complaints that were around that did not enter formal resolution but resolved before that. I think that actually makes the 47 that we've had in the previous quarter even more remarkable based on the fact that there could have been lots that were dealt with prior to entering the formal resolution process.
Yes, I would agree with that. Yes, I would agree with that. We, we don't want to shout again that it's too good, sort of thing. The only other bit to consider is that transportation were in those figures and now they've been removed. So there's, there's two things going on there. But yes, as from a service perspective, whilst there's 47 of that number, we, we view it really positively. And as you say, it's better than it was 18 months ago when they weren't even featuring in this report.
Thank you. councillor Reeve.
Thank you very much. A couple of points, we've mentioned these before, but I think it's worth mentioning again. Contractors have been told by Lincolnshire County Council that, as you mentioned earlier, if there's a defect within the area that's been sectioned off for traffic management, and it's within the criteria that needs repairing, to get the job done while they're there. But I know for a fact that some of the people that actually, hands-on people who lay the tarmac on the road have been told, don't do it, wait while you receive a full work order for it, because if we then put the bill in afterwards, we don't tend to get paid for it. I don't know if that's still the case, it was approximately a year ago when I was told that. That does need addressing if that is the case still. And they do need to be paid for the work they're done, that is done, you know, in that sort of situation. Next one, the Pothole Pro, problem with the mileage that it uses, and it's not being used actually fixing, driving to and from, there's lots of depots around the county that's Lincolnshire County Council and district council depots as well, such as the new one at Cambridge Corner, it's a secure fenced area, that could be used to cut down the mileage for use in rural areas. And the third point I'd like to make as well is that when roads are closed for maintenance, they need to state where the road is closed. All too often, you get a road that's closed, you take the diversion, and you still can't get to where you want to be from the opposite side, because it might be five miles ahead where the road's closed, it doesn't specifically state. And it's, it's just leading to lots of confusion. We had the same problem again this last week, ironically with a problem that I'd raised through Fix My Street, and people were being diverted all over the place, and because they didn't know where the road was closed, and that does need addressing. It's not a massive thing to do, I don't think, it just needs some sort of board there with it saying, road closed at, or north of Fillingham or something like that, say. And then people will know how far they can get before the road is closed. And it's been going on for too long, and it's been a constant failure to address. I'd like somebody to potentially address that if possible, please. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reeve. In terms of those questions, I'll start at the back end. In terms of the notification of roadworks, it's something that we mandate for our utility companies that are working on the network. So the streetworks team have got that as one of their top priorities, trying to communicate better to local residents to say, at this street or at this location, sometimes it's just a road closed ahead sign isn't enough. So yeah, I fully agree, it's in our streetworks charter as something that we're trying to push on developers and utility companies, but equally, we need to be doing it as a highway maintenance service. So take that away as an action. In terms of the Pothole Pro, I think we spoke last time after the last scrutiny committee, we are considering other depots where they're secure and can be sort of manned in terms of the operatives, you know, they, equally, they've got to be efficient to get to it and start their day. So we'll take that into consideration. And then in terms of the contractors, again, I'll take that away if that's an issue that you heard directly from one of our crews. They're allowed contractually, it's called a CIF, a Contractor Identified Faults. So there's a price list item within our contract that it, it gives them the ability to commercially recoup that. So again, like our supply chain partners, councillor Sheard, that you mentioned, I'll make sure that's actioned and take that away, and hopefully we'll see improvements.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick addition myself, just with the, regarding fixtures. For an example, I had a street in Mambi that I reported on Fix My Street, which has been fixed more than five times in the last 10 years. It's now got a planned resurface, but the fixtures have gaps, there are plenty of gaps in them that the water can get into, and the chippings are already coming out. So is the contractor making sure it's about quality of the fixtures more than quantity so we don't have to go back for many years?
Yeah, good question. In terms of the contract that we've let, we have a thing called the specification for highway works, which will list out for each of those treatment types exactly what we expect from it. As I said to councillor Wright, we have a 12-month defect period where we're able to monitor the performance of that work that they've put down. Our officers will attend either through their safety inspection, or they'll do an inspection near the back end of the 12 months to make sure that it's performing how we'd expect. And where it isn't, we will be requesting the contractor come back in, comes back in and corrects that defect. That will be at the contractor's expense. So keen to understand exactly the, the location where you've, you've seen something, we can, we can work with the teams to make sure that we, that they're at least aware of it and it's in process.
Brilliant, yep. councillor Sheard.
Thank you. Just playing devil's advocate a little bit, the complaints numbers do seem quite remarkable, in all honesty. Maybe not something for here and now, but it would be something I'd be interested to go through the process and procedure with you to ensure that it's accessible and it's not complicated in any way so that we're missing people's genuine complaints, because out in, in the public domain, there certainly seems to be more complaints than what the figures are reflecting.
Yep, happy to take that away. Got a few actions today. In terms of the complaints document, just to give you some assurance, it's completed by a separate team to the highway service, so it's done by business support, and they report it separately through OSMB. So just to give you that reassurance, it's not a highways document as such, I just report it here as sort of to keep this scrutiny committee up to date. But we'll definitely take it away, make sure that there's nothing in there that's missing. But I do think it's probably the reactive faults of, you know, localized issues that people are making, making a problem if they were given the opportunity to say, what do you think about the highway condition? I think you'd probably see more responses to that. But we need to make sure that that's the case, so I'll, I'll take that action away.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Vernon said, it is lovely to see apprentices here, and I hope you are enjoying the committees that you go to. It would be amiss of me not to mention, as councillor Grantham's not here, the 18th of September, you did state that there is a Pothole Pro demo. Could you ensure that all members, if able, are invited to any of the demonstrations? As I know, there are quite a few members that are interested that aren't part of the committee, and it would be nice to include them in any demonstration.
Thank you councillor Sneath. Just to, I guess, set expectations, we've, we've got a site that we've identified that we think would be a good one to demonstrate the Pothole Pro. That's done on the 18th of September. Initially, we've done that with the executive and the highways transportation scrutiny committee. We are a little bit worried that if we arrange a session and we get potentially 70 members arrive, we will create sort of traffic management issues. So I will take an action away. We are going to be doing, hopefully, working with the comms team, sort of monthly updates, and we plan to make sure that when the depot or when the vehicle is working out of one of our many depots across the county, we engage with the local councillor. But maybe we need to think of a north and south sort of demonstration, and we'll follow up after the 18th, if that's okay.
That'd be ideal, thank you so much. Thank you for all your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item, and I move that the committee endorses the report, that our satisfaction be recorded in relation to assurances received by the officers, and, and ask that our comments from today's discussion are cascaded across relevant teams and shared with the portfolio holders for their information and relevant actioning. Does anyone dissent to that proposal? Thank you, that is agreed. Moving over to agenda item number seven, highways major project update report. This report can be found on pages 73 to 83 of the agenda pack. The report provides the highways and transport scrutiny committee with an update on the progress of the highways major projects. The action today is asked that the committee review and comment on the details contained in the report and recommend any actions to the executive councillor for highways and transport, and that we pass our comments to the executive councillor in relation to the report. The report will be presented by Mr Sam Edwards, head of highways, infrastructure and laboratory services. Over to you, Sam.
Thank you, chairman, and good afternoon all. Just before I start, I wondered if a question back to yourself, chairman and Rachel. I'm conscious of time, whether there's sufficient time to go through the remaining two papers, whether I go through this quickly or we postpone one of the papers to have more time to go into this, because I'm just very, very conscious on that.
I think it'd be amiss of me not to actually ask the members here, as we are half a quarter to one, would you like me to defer those two to the next, or are you happy to sit and we'll go through?
Sorry, I think I've got time to go through mine, I just don't know if Steve's got time to go through his as well. I could do sort of a half job of mine, or whether I do a full job of mine, if that makes sense.
Councillor Vernon.
Chairman, I think on the basis that we have sort of all settled in, we've had an adjournment, I'd be really keen to hear the road safety report and think it would be a shame to miss it out completely, but wonder if we may sort of perhaps, in the usual manner, take the sort of written reports as read and ask for the verbal update to be as brief as possible, but without missing any of the key information. But obviously, not just my opinion, yeah, yeah.
No, I would, I would say I am very interested to hear the full report, but yes, if the questions can be short and precise, I'm sure we can get through it. Over to you, Sam.
Okay, thank you. I'll run through very quickly then. So the first project on, on this, and I should start in saying, we haven't had an update on the major project since December 24, whether it's due to scrutiny committees not, not aligning an annual lease, so it's been some, some time. First one on there is Grantham's Southern Relief Road. I think you've, you've seen the press and previous updates to this, we've had a number of projects throughout the life of this project. To, to keep it short, I just want to update on where we're at at the moment. The pictures on the bottom of page 74 of your, of your pack is, is the as built as, as it is now. In the distance at the back, you can start to see the first section of the final bridge that we pushed across the east coastline, so sort of pushed towards you. And in, and on the top of page 75, you can see that section from the other side of the valley, if you see. So that piece you can see there is the permanent bridge, that will be the other end of the, the other side of the valley. So you'll push a next section, build another section, push that through and so forth. And then just quickly, just to show, there's a big gap you can see at the front of that. What you have is a temporary launch nose that sits at the front, so that comes on for the launch process and then gets taken off once it's in place. And that's the launch that you can see being fabricated in the workshop at the bottom of page 75. So that's temporarily only a trust scenario that helps it guide it and then comes off at the end. We've recently put out some media to say that following the start of the launch, we'll be approximately two years through to completion, because it has been delayed significantly, and we're continuing to work on the solution to get to a, a launch date, which we're hoping to firm up soonish, but we're still not quite there yet. Moving on to North Iceman Relief Road, I think with the time constraints, I don't propose to go through in too detail, I consider it was heard at OSMB a couple of weeks ago in an executive last week. But to summarize, we're waiting for the legal orders to be confirmed, hopefully mid-September, and we now have the key decision to allow us to submit the final business case when that's, when that comes through. Everything is in motion, if everything goes to plan, to start in February next year with the main works. However, the exolent works are taking place right now, and we're due to start archaeological works towards the end of this month. Leveling up from projects, this was sort of my final update, I suppose, just to say that all those five projects listed in the report are complete. And I just put in one sort of picture of the before and after of the Springfield Road round, Springfield Road Roundabout, the, the capacity improvements. And actually, when Vanessa Strange was here earlier, she just mentioned to me that she'd been meeting with the freight industries around the area, and they're coming back with some data of how their journey time and journey time reliability, which is what the whole corridor A16 improvements were based around, has improved since the completion of these works, which is really good. Moving down to Central Bank, those highway works are complete. We're looking to go back in October, November to complete what's called the gateways and greenings. Those are the elements that couldn't be completed at the time due to the design elements not being quite in place. Netland Road Roundabout, that's a scheme that we're actively progressing through detailed design at the moment. We had a public engagement event a couple of months ago, which was, it wasn't a case of should we be doing it, it's a, why isn't it done? So there's a really positive feedback around doing it. The funding is, is in, or part, a vast majority of funds in place, and some of it is through the devolution bid. So there's a commitment to deliver the scheme through that, the devolution through there. We are effectively going through planning, or soon to be submitting a planning application, and we've just got to wait for the developer to amend some of theirs at the same time. Moving down, Baelgate, again, I'm going to gloss over that quickly, we've come to this, to this meeting previously, and those works are due starting in January, I think, next year. Yarborough Hill, so I picked up previously, but following the questions earlier, so this is a job that we're looking to complete. Following the completion of Baelgate is moved sort of straight on to Yarborough Hill, because we don't want the two of them on at the same time. So to answer some of the questions earlier, and I don't want anyone to get, start screaming or getting worried, but the whole of that bank is slipping, not just the bit you're seeing, the whole of the area is slipping, and it has been doing for thousands of years. But we're, but that's why there isn't too much of a problem, because the whole thing moves, it's, and it's the strata around there. And that's where you get relatively slow building issues on the upside of the road, where you'll have the properties and the walls, and they have to be, to be dealt with. What we're seeing in this isolated location though, is where you've got an old concrete lay-by, and effectively, the loading is much closer to the edge of the embankment. There's a retaining wall at the back of there, which is slipped and damaged and so forth, but that's not the cause of it. But the main cause is actually drainage, so water and so forth is, is getting into there, it's not flowing through, it, it's sort of liquefies some of the ground, and then you've got the extra weight for the concrete as well. So we've, we've been out, we've surveyed it quite in, in depth, and there's another isolated location just slightly down from the hill and the footway as well. The resolution we're working towards is actually rather, is to get rid of the retaining wall and slope it back down, also get rid of the lay-by because it's no longer required, and push the carriage road back in line as where it is, which pushes the footway, which builds your space away from the bank. And the reason for that is why I've put in the report that this is going to have some fairly significant traffic management impacts, because you're basically, unlike you widening a road, you're actually narrowing it at sorts, and you need to come back in. So there is going to be some, that's probably going to be the biggest challenge in this project, is to keep the public flowing while we're doing the works. At the same time, we also have a surfacing scheme taking place down at University Roundabout and where the rope walk is and so forth. So we're just tying all those elements together at the moment. And then, item nine on, on page 81, just a quick update of the works that have, you've probably wonderfully sat in on the way to get here today on Carwin Road. Generally, they're going really, really well. I gauge the projects by the number, the, the noise I get from the team about issues on site, and the number, and the noise I get from members and the public, and we're getting very, very little. And for a scheme of that scale and where it is, I think is a really successful. We are helped by the fact that the road is, is actually very wide, and we can do it in section, and we're just getting into the surfacing elements now, but there's no particular elements to bring up, it's just going as expected. And the final item is Metheringham Crossroads, so this is a scheme that we're just starting detailed design now, we're just setting the teams up and commissioning it. It's a well-known junction on the A15 and the B1202, it's, it's, it has a lot of accidents, it's, Steve will, will agree, there's, there's, it's really high on, on the accident hotspots that we've got. Now, actually during the feasibility, we looked at a safe scheme, but looking forward to the future, it's also got major capacity problems if you don't write it now, particularly with the North Iceman Relief Road being constructed. So actually, we're looking to address two at, at points at the same time. And I'll conclude there, chairman, ask for any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sam, for your report. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Councillor Robinson, do we have any questions?
Yeah, councillor Wright.
Thank you. Sam, no question, I'd just like to say, it's not my division, but I know the issues with Metheringham. I've known that road, that junction for 40 years, it's one that you call footlift, because you always take your foot off the accelerator when you go through there. And so I know for the people in that area, it'll be absolutely fantastic if something's done about it, because it's a major concern. And to say the number of accidents I've seen on that junction are phenomenal, so good to see it's on there.
Just to add to that, just that I didn't go into, we're looking to change it into a signalized junction, and but widen it as well, so you have a through, a through lane with a right turn waiting. So rather than just, you know, putting lights in the, in the, in the existing scenario, we'll expand it, so you get the through lane as well as the right turn.
Thank you, councillor Clock.
Thank you. Sam, I was interested when you said about what's happening with Yarborough Hill, because about 20 years ago, it might be a bit more than that, because when you get older, the time goes very quick. Spring Hill was closed for a number of months, and they said the hill was moving, so is that connected with Yarborough Hill, because, you know, in the location they're both at? And the other question is on Central Bank, why isn't there a cycle path that's connected? Because it starts and then all of a sudden it stops. There's a section- There's a section of road, there is no cycle path there, and I've just wondered why, when we had the opportunity, we didn't put one straight one in. Thank you.
So it's going to be difficult to comment on both, as we're sat here. I don't know the history of the Spring Hill issues or why it was shut. I certainly don't know whether it's connected to the same issue that we're dealing with here. What I would say is it's likely to be a similar, because it's all about the strata and what's happened with the geological formations, but I can't, from an engineering perspective, say what's causing that, was causing that at the same time. But I know the area well, and I know, for example, the wall, as you come down, you've got patcher's plates there holding the wall back. It will be a similar scenario where it's providing stability to safeguard the road and to safeguard the properties and so forth. It's the nature of a glacial rift through there, and the fact that it will move as time goes on, and we've built on it as a medieval city, and you have to manage it around there. So there will be certain areas. But I do want to be clear that the localised issues we're seeing at Yarborough is not happening everywhere, that's because of a set of extra over elements that are happening to it. Generally, things are moving, but you don't see them, because everything's moving, if you get what I mean? Rather, it's just been one, one element. With regards to the cycleway on Central Bank, I'm afraid I don't know the exact bit of cycleway in the bit, so maybe we will take that away and look into it.
Thank you. Just a question, the report refers to Metheringham Crossroads as a collision hotspot for a long time. How long has it been known as a collision hotspot, and why is this scheme just happening now?
Okay, in a moment, I'll ask Steve to pick on that, so he gets something to say. But as far as the, how long has it been there and what we do it? So there was a proposal brought forward to LCC a couple of years ago about a speed reduction on that section of road. That wasn't something that was supported, and we were looked to look into alternative measures. And that was what drove into looking at feasibility as more physical measures into their own than speed reduction. Now, there will be some views that obviously putting traffic lights on is a bad thing and creates congestion and queuing. Of course, when it's red, you will have to stop and then start again. If you actually look at your journey time from Sleaford to Lincoln, there's no difference at all. There's literally no difference, because where, yes, you've stopped, but where you might be doing 40, you're doing 42, for example, in the 50, and actually, your journey time remains exactly the same. So there will be a perception that the council will receive from the public about, well, this is a fast way, the A15 having to stop, but actually, your journey time reliability isn't affected in any way. But I wonder if Steve's got some elements to add here about the accident figures.
Thank you, Sam. I didn't think you wanted to listen to me speak today. I thought that's why you were trying to shut it down. The number of collisions throughout here has been pretty consistent over history, as councillor Wright identified. We have done a number of local safety schemes in the area. We introduced an average speed camera in 2002. You have enhanced safety signing on pretty much every direction on the approach. We put an average speed camera system across both of the junctions and the length there in 2015. So I think a number of things have occurred over time. For us, when we look at a local safety scheme within the Road Safety Partnership, we're generally looking at lower cost, smaller measures. So at the point when we then looked at it this last time, those bigger interventions that are going to cost more money, signalised junctions, roundabouts, et cetera, are outside of our scope, so we've then presented that to the capital steering group for feasibility, and that's where we are today. So I think there's almost been a steady progress over time, as we've escalated the need for intervention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Christopher.
Thank you, Chair. No question, you'll be pleased to know, it was really just to commend the teams on the engagement day regarding the Netland Roundabout, I did go along to that. The whole thing was great, it really did exactly what it should have done, which was make the people there aware, give them an opportunity to come and ask their questions. I was there for one or two of the more critical folk who arrived, but I would absolutely agree that the feedback that I've had from residents regarding that has been very positive, and that it is something that's long overdue. And of course, I'll be keenly watching what happens with the next roundabout along, once this project is complete, so you'll be hearing from me on that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Just to have a may on that, it's just your last comment about looking at the next roundabout, just so you're aware, and there's absolutely no commitments, just as there aren't as any decision-making, but we are currently carrying out a feasibility of what Ragby Road Roundabout may look like, should it be a decision for the authority, or maybe the mayor will combine authority, to look into improvements in those areas. For a modest level of funding to get to that place, we feel it's the right thing to do, to say, this is what it would look like, this is what it would cost to deliver, these are the benefits, these are the risks in delivering. But there's no commitment to delivering at this stage, but we're trying to get our ducks in a row, I suppose, should funding become available.
Thank you. Councillor Sheard.
Thank you. It's just coming back to Springfield's Road Roundabout. I think there was a safety aspect that was drastically overlooked when we were doing the roundabout, and that was a footbridge over to the McDonald's food outlet that a lot of young people come along, and they run the gauntlet each and every day trying to cross the road, which has now increased in speed and vehicle capacity. So I do implore that we look at this as a matter of urgency before somebody does get hurt or indeed killed on this road.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. A footbridge would be more ideal there, there's certainly no debate, and I think possibly 18 months ago, we had a similar debate in the scrutiny committee. Just to give a bit of background, when we put the, well, when the levelling up fund bid came about, we had to put in business cases for that, and there were relatively short turnaround on that. So we put in a number of projects as the projects that we're, well, five of the six projects that we're delivering, and in that same period, we were carrying out a feasibility or an option study of what it might look like. So you broadly put in the concept within the bid and then developing the details behind it. In that bid document, we included that we were looking into the essential of a footbridge at this location. During that period, the delivery of it became difficult on two fronts. One, from a engineering perspective, very, very difficult to cross on the north side, because you've got the design outlet, and it's right on the border, so you have to go to the south, which means crossing over, and you've got the development in the southeast quadrant, which has extant planning. So to go on there would then stifle their planning application and would cost tens of millions potentially. So there's lots of engineering reasons around it. What was clear, though, in order to deliver it, we would need land purchase, potentiary compulsory purchase orders and planning permission. The deadline that we had to deliver the scheme and spend the money, that was never going to, it wasn't even a question, it could not align, and had we continued to want to deliver that footbridge as part of that bid, the bid would have been unsuccessful and nothing would be delivered. So I'm not saying that a footbridge wouldn't be ideal and wouldn't be an improvement, but that's the reasons why we couldn't deliver it within this scheme. If the council chooses to make a decision to that to be a priority and wants to bring that forward, that's something as officers, we can look to deliver.
If I may just come back on that, just to say also, that roundabout has increased the speed along Hall Beach Road, where we have a skate park that is utilised daily by multiple young people, who then obviously are attracted by the McDonald's. So it really is for the young people that we're requesting this.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. Just a question with the Metheringham Crossroads, why are we relying on electronic technology with a traffic light system there and not putting in a large diameter roundabout that would potentially ease the flow of traffic? Although you say that people, the journey times between Lincoln and Sleaford, for example, would be the same either way, it's the perception that people are being held up, very often I find myself, even with modern traffic lights, there's nobody else coming from any other direction, and you're sat there at a red light thinking, this is the 21st century where cars can drive themselves, but I'm sat here at a red light, waiting, and there's nobody coming from any other direction. Is there a reason behind the traffic lights opposed to the roundabout?
Yeah, so roundabouts were one of the ones that we looked into as the options within the feasibility and the options report. Simply, well, simply, but I'll go into it further, that the traffic benefits were more so with a roundabout, as far as flow, but not really needed. I'll give the analogy of a sledgehammer to crack a nut. The cost, I think we're looking at around three and a half million to four million, the cost was about seven and a half million for a roundabout. So you would double the price, but not really double the benefits, because once you get over a certain position, it doesn't add anything further to it. The other element to it was also that, from a traffic flow perspective, on the A15, let's say, travelling at night or at less busy times in the interpeak, the green light will maintain on the A15 where there's no demand from the side roads, so actually, you will continue through there. If you put a roundabout at all times, you must slow down, you must stop, so actually, you're balancing the need at the different times. As far as the way that the lights work, sometimes they will be red when there's a need, but they operate on what's called a scoot system, where it basically learns over time about driver behaviour at certain times of the day and certain patterns, and we have receptors that are in there, whether they're, I forget what they're called, magnetometers in the road that pick up, or cameras that pick up on flow, and they will adapt their flow depending on it. But that's the reason.
Thank you. I can, the only comment I'd like to make is, I'd like to echo the concerns of councillor Sheard at Springfield's Roundabout. It is great that you've made three lanes and an additional lane on the left-hand side. Unfortunately, when those two lanes on the inside have articulated lorries or high vehicles in them, you can't see the public taking the gauntlet to run across, and all of a sudden, you're faced with people trying to cross that road, which when they set out was empty, but of course, people can now shoot left. So it is something that I think we need to look at as a committee, and hopefully, we can speak to executives regarding that. But as we have no more questions or comments, this now concludes the discussion of this item, and I would like to move that the committee endorse the report, that our satisfaction be recorded in relation to assurances received by officers, and I ask that our comments from today's discussion be cascaded across relevant teams and shared with the portfolio holder for their information and relevant actioning. Does anyone dissent to that proposal? Show of hands. No? Thank you. That is agreed. Moving swiftly on to agenda item number eight, Road Safety Partnership Annual Report. This scrutiny report can be found on pages 85 to 135 of the agenda pack. This report seeks to provide committee members with an update on fatal and killed and seriously injured casualties figures for Lincolnshire, and sets out data on trends, comparisons, and areas of priority. The action today is ask that we review and comment on the report and highlight any recommendations or further actions required, and that we seek assurances on the work being undertaken by the Road Safety Partnership to reduce the number of people killed and injured on country roads. The report is presented by Mr Stephen Bachelor, Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership Senior Manager. Over to you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I recognise the report is very long, and there's lots of numbers and data in there, including the appendix, so I'll just try and draw out what I consider to be some of the key facts. I'm always conscious of highlighting that when the Road Safety Partnership started around 2000, the number of people killed and seriously injured every year on the roads was just over 800, including up to 100 fatalities. So we have seen significant progress in the last 25 years. However, it's still quite clear that there's much work to do. In 2024, it's noted as having 52 people killed and 379 fatally injured, sorry, seriously injured. What I would say is that we just had an inquest from the coroner in the last couple of weeks, which has meant that one of those fatalities has been defined as a suicide, unfortunately, and that does mean that the numbers will change, so obviously, these things are always subject to change. But I will highlight that and update it going forwards. So some of the key facts here, and I refer to KSI, which is killed or seriously injured as we go through. We saw a small increase in 2024, from 426 to 431 people killed or seriously injured. The majority of those casualties in Lincolnshire occur on the rural road network, as you probably would expect. Casualties are much more likely to be male. Collisions are distributed throughout the whole county, but as I feedback every year, it does tend to be slightly higher in the East Lindsay district. The highest risk groups haven't changed for us, they remain high-powered two-wheel motor vehicles, young drivers aged between the ages of 17 and 24, and mature road users. And again, I always put a caveat on this, the Department for Transport define mature drivers as 60 plus. I am not for a second suggesting anyone over the age of 60 is a mature or older driver, just to be clear on that, it's just to make sure that we are consistent. We saw decreases in some of our key areas, so mature users, children between the ages of nought and 15, pedestrians and low-powered motorcycles, which are really positive, but we did see increases in high-powered motorcycle riders, pedal cyclists, and those drivers that I mentioned in the younger age category. Just a few facts about the fatal casualties, because they tend to be obviously clearly the most serious, but they give indicators to the pyramid of serious and slights as well. So I mentioned males being the most likely people to be injured, and they are 75% of our fatalities in 2024. 77% of drivers were a driver or a rider. 92% happened in fine weather, without high winds, which always surprised me, I would expect the percentage of bad weather to be higher as a contributory factor, but it's not. 83% of the fatal accidents happened on our A and B class roads, which again, is interesting when you consider some of the conversations we've had today about the unclassified and lower classified roads. The highest contributory factor defined by officers when filling in their Stats 19 reporting forms was driver/ rider being aggressive, dangerous or reckless. So although a great deal of road safety work is undertaken by the parent organisations of the partnership, the council, the police, the office of the Police and Crime Commissioner, et cetera, a significant proportion is done in partnership through the LRSP. As I mentioned before, we started in 2000, and the current partners are the Office of Police and Crime Commissioner, with Mark Jones chairing the strategic board, Lincolnshire Police, Lincolnshire County Council, National Highways, the Fire and Rescue Service, and the East Midlands Ambulance Service. Again, just to come back a little bit and say, we are still, I think the only, but certainly one of the very few, to co-locate the resources from different organisations into one location to ensure that we are working together to be as effective and efficient as we can in road safety. We have forensic collision investigators from Lincolnshire Police sat with the road safety engineers and casualty reduction officers from both organisations, all sat on a management team, all working together day in, day out. Again, you would like to think that that will create efficiencies and ensure that we're all working in the same direction. We follow the four E's method of road safety in Lincolnshire, which include education, enforcement, engineering and evaluation. And very, very briefly, our current activities in 2024/25 include delivery of accident investigation and prevention. Engineering works with over 1,000 sites and links being assessed every year, generally coming to about 50 sites that require more detailed investigation. Spoke briefly about Metheringham Crossroads, and that's a good example of where we identify in the cluster runs and move it forward through the authority. We complete road safety audits for new roads, and we have been delivering the Department for Transport Safer Roads Fund, which was just over £2 million. Enforcement plays a significant part of the work that we do alongside our partners within Lincolnshire Police. We currently have 37 static fixed cameras and about 100 mobile camera sites that we undertake that enforcement. We do Operation Octane, which is dealing with motorcycle issues, seasonal education enforcement, drink and drug driving campaigns, both in terms of enforcement and the corresponding education, and then we liaise very closely with our local police enforcement teams and the roads policing teams. We do the Community Speed Watch Scheme, which now has 298 members, including 1,572 trained volunteers. More than 45,000 warning letters have been sent to motorists since the inception of the scheme in October 2018. Operation SNAP is a little bit more recent, so maybe going for the last few years, but again, we process that at the Road Safety Partnership, and in 2024, we were up to 2,262 submissions of alleged road traffic offences from members of the public using their dashcan footage. That resulted as in 995 being processed as alleged offences, and an additional 636 warning letters were sent out from us. Processed offences include due care and attention, reasonable consideration to other road users, failure to comply with traffic light signs, and failure to comply with solid white lines and mobile phone use. So as you can see, these are all really important offences that should be looked into. Finally, in terms of the education, training and publicity side, we deliver national driver offender retraining scheme courses and had over 20,000 clients in 2024. We have a comprehensive curriculum of education that goes into schoolchildren of every age, and these include pedestrian, cycle and in-car safety to primary school pupils. We also run a junior road safety officer campaign, and at secondary school, we include lessons on adapting to survive, preparing to drive, passenger awareness, and Too Fast Too Soon, which is an immersive theatre production, which again, is hopefully tackling that newly qualified drivers or the passengers who are going to be at a vulnerable age as well. We do a wide range of education schemes and training, so we deliver Bike Safe, Smart Rider and Biker Down training all to motorcycle riders. We do deliver non-police referral suites of training, so periodically, young driver training, taxi drivers, and also Too Fast Too Soon, but at a corporate level, working with businesses. with businesses and looking at managing occupational road risk. We still continue to manage the school crossing patrol facilities for the council, and everything we do is underpinned by data and evaluation. The last two sections of the report deal with the finances and what we'll be looking at doing going forwards with the next strategy for Lincolnshire. And that's it, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and questions. Councillor Womson, do we have any questions?
Yeah, I'll start with one of my questions. Thanks very much for the report. Hoping to be able to join the and be a volunteer myself on the Community Speed Watch scheme, like councillor Vernon and councillor Sneath, after one of my parish council meetings in Northcotes, to create a deterrent through my villages. I see forty-five thousand warning letters have been sent out. Do we have any data on how many the police took further action for multiple instances?
Thank you, councillor. So the scheme itself won't lead to an offence being prosecuted, because the evidence and the way that it has been captured doesn't allow us to do that. However, every time somebody has been witnessed on a community speed watch within a six-month period anywhere in the county, then that is sent to the roads policing unit. Their responsibility then is to go out and visit the house of the person that got that third notice, have a knock on the door and have a conversation. Equally, they can then choose to do some targeted enforcement if we believe it's a persistent problem. So whilst the good work of that group itself won't necessarily lead to an offence being processed, it can lead to other actions occurring from Lincolnshire Police.
That's brilliant. Do you have any data on how many the police have took forward on that?
I don't have it with me, but I can get it, because I know it has been looked into.
That's brilliant. Thank you very much to get that to me. That's brilliant. Councillor Sheard.
Thank you. Just to comment, I'm also a member of the Community Speed Watch, just in case. So my point I want to come back to is I think there's some great things that you're doing, and I think there's some great informative pieces that we start right down at primary school, but focusing on schools, I think we have a major issue in and around schools in that what with all of the housing that is going on in and around Lincolnshire, a lot of the housing is being around schools, and that increases the vehicles on the road. Whilst markings are put in place, they're not always adhered to, we don't have effective enforcement. I think it's something that we need to look at, we need to highlight, certainly schools in my area. I've got people, residents, shouting out, saying about the parking issues they're facing, and I myself have stood on multiple occasions and watched children being exited from vehicles onto busy highways in a really dangerous situation. I think we really need to get on top of this before we do see fatalities raised.
Thank you, councillor. This is clearly a persistent challenge for a county like ours of rural nature, where travelling to school is sometimes necessary, and the way in which the schools are built historically don't allow for a great deal of parking, so it can lead to frustration in the first instance, and potential risk and danger in the second. When going through the process of reviewing the traffic management policies, recently Scrutiny Committee B highlighted this to us at length, we've committed to creating a sort of single point of contact, one-stop shop between all of the organisations that have responsibility for delivering safety outside of schools. I'm not responsible for civil parking, however, I do know that great progress has been made there with using CCTV at certain locations, and also using the vans in other occasions in the past as well. So enforcement's clearly one part of it, but equally, as you highlighted, these people are dropping off their children at schools, the people doing that type of parking have to be responsible as well. So what we need to be able to do is ensure that when somebody writes in and raises concern, that it goes to one person, and everybody that has some sort of influence or can have impact has sight of it, and then work together to deliver some sort of improvement. So that's something that has been lacking, but I think will improve going forwards. Equally, I think we somehow need to get that sense of social responsibility from parents and work cooperatively with the schools to ensure that those parents understand the risk and then make a difference. Finally, if I may, we do also, of course, do school crossing patrols outside of schools, so when we've had highlights, sorry, concerns highlighted to us about children crossing, we do review those sites, and if they meet the criteria, we can install a school crossing patrol officer, and sometimes it can also lead to pedestrian crossings in appropriate circumstances.
Thank you, and I totally agree, working alongside the schools and getting the message out to the parents to either utilise footpaths or cycle paths or whatever to bring their children to school. The biggest shout I have is that times have changed, parents need to go to work, they're on a timeframe, et cetera, but we need to find ways around that. I think one other thing that we should perhaps look at is sort of reward-based schemes, and also ensuring that communication links when people are having issues. I think that they're a little bit mystified, other than coming to their district or their local councillor to report issues, I think they're a little bit mystified as to where to come to report their issues. So maybe we need to get some comms out, or maybe actually provide the links somewhere along the line, so that people can start reporting, so that we can get a whole picture of what's going on, because as I say, it's an ever-increasing issue, and if we are not careful, fatalities will raise.
Thank you very much. Councillor Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your report. Again, that was very, very interesting. I'm concerned about the highest contributing factor being a driver or rider being aggressive, dangerous, or reckless, and I'd like to know a little bit more about your definition of that, if you have that information available. I'd also like to talk more, and this is the DFT's definition, not mine, about the more mature road users being over the age of sixty. We have talked previously in this scrutiny panel about the fact that you go into schools and colleges and engage with children, but how can we target that particular age group? I know we discussed the possibility of the Road Safety Partnership going out to community groups or coffee mornings and whatnot, but I really do feel we must work harder to try and target those particular demographics. Along with that, something that struck me as we were looking at the report is that the number of children that are home educated in Lincolnshire is growing substantially and has doubled within the last four years. We must ensure that we continue to meet those children and ensure that they have the education that the, excuse me, schoolchildren have as well, particularly sort of with them being home educated, that doesn't mean that they're not going to drive, they're not going to experience the roads at some point, so I'd welcome sort of information on how you're planning to reach those children, sort of not necessarily now, but sort of over the next few months and years. I'd also just like to mention Operation SNAP, which seems to have mixed reviews. This is something I've promoted quite heavily within my parish councils that I attend, and it has gone down really, really well, and people appreciate the fact that if they send in footage of people blatantly disregarding sort of road rules and laws, it is being looked at and appreciate, again, the fact that it won't result in a prosecution, because obviously they're laymen, but I think it's a success story, and I think that more could be done with that as sort of time goes by, particularly relating, as we've just heard from councillor Sheard's comments regarding safety around schools. What's to stop Operation SNAP being publicised more around those areas to try and deal with those enforcement issues which come up around the school gates? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So the definition is a national definition, it's defined in the Stats twenty document by the Department for Transport. It wasn't until recently careless, reckless, in a hurry, and the definition has changed, so that has skewed our statistics when you look through at those sections before. Ultimately, as we know, the vast majority of collisions are going to involve some sort of driver error, and I think the sort of reckless and the sort of careless element is generally what is a significant contributory factor. I would hate for people to think that it's awful driving, people doing deliberately bad things which is contributing most of the time. It's generally an error, a lot of them can be foreseen, but most people aren't going out, you know, careless and heedless of what other people are doing. In terms of mature drivers, as you know, we've talked about this before, it is a challenge for us, getting into those groups has been really very difficult. I maintain, I think, our best avenue is through the NHS and particularly GP surgeries, and we've been working to try and ensure that we've got good relations with that representation, because I think that's clearly where people are going to be going at a certain age throughout your life, and so having those assessments done and getting advice and support is really important. We said, I highlighted there that it's a challenge for us, the biggest one is, of course, with it being a large rural county, people still need to drive for longer to ensure that they are flourishing, that they have their freedoms, and so we want people to be able to do that, but it has to be safe. We did implement a new assessment through Lincolnshire Police, so if somebody has been involved in a collision and they meet some certain demographics, so the age and various other bits, they can be referred through to a fit test, which again has been really useful in highlighting the number of people that do face issues that may not have been picked up before as well. So I think there's still work for us to do, quite clearly. What I would say is that we've been working this year very much about redeveloping our Too Fast Too Soon theatre production to the seventeen-to-twenty-four-year-olds, and we've also been improving the curriculum, both in primary and secondary. So for example, at secondary, we've started now doing a forensic collision investigation based on a real collision, so that's kind of been the things we've been working on this year, but mature drivers is very much what we're going to be looking at going forwards. The home education piece, what I would say is that it's not something I've looked into or thought too much about until you highlighted it there, so thank you. What I would say is we're well-placed, because we're conscious that not every school can always give us as much time to have in-person training delivered, so we have been moving more towards facilitating online training, and also packages that can be given to teachers so they can do it within PHSE and things like that. That, I think, leaves us well-placed to be able to disseminate that out to people who are being home educated, so I will take that forward as an action going forward here. In terms of Operation SNAP, the only two things I can think of realistically that might be considered a criticism of the scheme, because we've gone from nought to nearly two-and-a-half-thousand submissions, would be very positive. The first might be that people feel frustrated if they've submitted something and it's not been processed as an alleged offence, but there's two key parts to that. One is, I've made it very clear that it has to be consistent, just because somebody saw you and caught you on a dashcam, you can't be dealt with differently than if it was any other police type of enforcement. So the question of the two ex-police officers who worked for roads policing, who do all of the reviews for us, is what would you have done if you'd have witnessed that on the roadside? And so we process on that basis for consistency, and I think that's really important. But equally, the evidential threshold has to be quite high, because ultimately, we weren't there, the police weren't there, so the only way in which that offence can be proved is in the court of law, if somebody doesn't accept it and take a diversion. So the evidence has to clearly show what's happened. Now, you in the car at the time witnessing it may well have more information that would make it clear that something was done when it shouldn't have been, but we can only rely on what's in front of us on the video. So sometimes, as I mentioned there, about one-third get processed as offences, which means two-thirds don't, and that could be a frustration. The second, I guess, is a moral objection to the principle, you know, some people might feel that, you know, it's a bit Big Brother and that they don't agree with the principle of having dashcam that can capture you anywhere. Well, that's, as I say, a moral quandary, it's not one for us to, I think, factor in at the Road Safety Partnership. For us, we have a tool which is capturing a wide range of offences, and I think that's really vital.
Thank you. Councillor Bree.
Thank you. You've largely answered my question there with the prosecution on dashcam evidence. So just for clarification, you can be prosecuted solely on dashcamera evidence if you've, if all the things align and come together to prosecute. It isn't just that we are laymen and we cannot, unlike the road safety people standing beside the road with the guns and that lot, you can one hundred per cent prosecute. And so, and you quoted some figures there, the roughly, out of the two-and-a-half thousand, nine are being processed, six hundred warning letters, can we assume for about the other three hundred went on to be prosecuted, because you haven't actually mentioned in the report how many successful prosecutions were from that? You've just said about the number of letters and the ones that are processed, not actually the successful prosecutions. Do you have a figure for successful from Operation SNAP?
Thank you, councillor. So the, that was just over nine hundred alleged offences and an additional, I think it's about six, I haven't got the figure in front of me, about six hundred warning letters on top of that. I'm really, proud is maybe too strong a word, but I am proud of that part of this initiative, because in pretty much every other area of the UK, if the evidence isn't clear and obvious, then no further action is taken. For us, there are circumstances where it's marginal, so it doesn't quite meet that evidential threshold that I made, but most people can look and see something wasn't quite right there. Or maybe they've worked, they're outside of the guidance in the highway code, so it's not technically an offence, but it's not a great piece of driving. So those extra six, seven hundred people, whilst no prosecution is occurring, they are being warned that somebody felt so strongly about the manner of your driving, that they were prepared to go online and submit this dashcam footage and ask for something to them, so that's in addition. I don't have, because of the timeline of up to six months for it to be put forward for a court case, and then the time that it takes to then complete the court case, I don't have the figures, but I will come back and come up with a legitimate method of demonstrating within a period of time how many were completed. It won't necessarily correlate to those that have been caught in two thousand and twenty-four, because of that sort of constant flow and timeline, but I know it's a significant proportion. If it's got to the point where we've processed it as an offence, then it's done all the things that I mentioned before, and somebody has put in a witness statement and is prepared to go to court, and they are laypeople, so then, yes, I would suggest it's going to be a very high percentage of those do end up in some form of completion, other than no further action.
Brilliant, thank you. Councillor Bright.
Thank you. Yes, Steve, reading the report, it's, I think, one of the things you have to remember is when we see all those KSI's, is all the families that are associated with that as well, it affects a lot more people, it's actually shown, unfortunately, my division with the A fifteen and the A seventeen, seen far too many of those in the last few years, especially younger people. But I think with the dashcam stuff as well, we have to remember is only what constitutes legal and illegal behaviour. We talk about mature drivers, myself today on a main travel-to-work route on a sixty-mile-an-hour, being stuck in a line of traffic behind somebody doing forty-two miles an hour hogging the centre line, they're not doing anything illegal, but that leads to reckless overtaking, where people are, you know, legitimately wanting to travel in clear daylight on a road at a speed that it's meant to take. So it's not just speeding and aggressive, is it, that causes the issues? But the question I really want to ask is with regards to enforcement, so I've just mentioned the fifteen, so I've got the village of Lesingham that's got two entrances off the A fifteen, and what you'll know is a heavily treed, sweeping bend, we've got the speed reduced to fifty mile an hour, but I can't get any interest in actually doing something about what is a KSI area, you know that there's collisions there, there's been fatalities, there's been injuries, and nothing is being done about that, I can't seem to make any head ground on it, and yet, I'm told repeatedly over the years that our mobile speed wagons are not there to collect fines, but are actually meant to be put in areas of known incidents of interest. So when I can't get action on that area of the A fifteen, and yet on a Saturday afternoon at two PM, as was this last weekend, at the Brunswick Junction, which I think saw an accident in September last year, but after that I'd have to struggle to remember when there's been an incident there, why yet again I see the mobile speed wagon waiting for people who shouldn't be speeding, but come round the corner perhaps at high speed, what's the justification for taking speed action at an area that doesn't have high accident rate, and yet the areas where I do, I can't seem to get anything done about it?
Thank you, councillor. So I don't have the specific information about those two locations to hand, but I can talk in more broadly, if that's okay, and then you can obviously ask any additional questions to that. So you're absolutely right, every single location that's considered for enforcement, whether that's mobile, fixed, or average speed, are all measured against the same criteria, that is the Department for Transport criteria outlined in DFT circular O one O seven. It's available online, or I can send it through, so you can see what we're actually considering. But the two factors are, as you've highlighted, some level of collisions, and it's different depending on what intervention you're looking at, but then also a history of vehicles exceeding the speed limit. So I would suggest, without knowing the specifics at Lesingham, if it's not being, meeting the criteria, then it would maybe be on speeds, so the average speeds will be lower, the number of people exceeding the speed limits aren't high in comparison. So what you can clearly see, I think, if speed isn't a factor in the collisions occurring, putting a camera van or some other intervention in there to reduce speeds probably isn't going to make a difference. It's, you know, there might be some other issue or problem that needs to be resolved, and there are caveats to that, so there might be some stretches of roadware, coming back to the point about injudicious overtaking, you know, it can be sometimes that people are doing things that they shouldn't, going too fast when it's not appropriate to do so, and average speed cameras can have an impact on that as well. But what I'm very happy to do is go away and have a look at both of those. What I'd like to think also is that if we have a location that we are visiting, that the number of collisions has decreased since the time that we put it in place, so it might feel like there aren't collisions occurring with the same frequency as another location, but that's because we have some sort of intervention in place, that's possible as well. We generally see a reduction in injury collisions at every location, but I'm very happy to go and have a look at that specific location and see why, if it's been assessed, it didn't meet the criteria in the past.
Thank you. Councillor Christopher.
Thank you, Chair. We've seen recently, very recently, some unauthorised alterations to quite a lot of our highways infrastructure in the form of St George's flags, and I'm certainly not going to ask you to get into any sort of political debate around that, Steve, you'll be pleased to know, but what struck me reading this report, with the timely nature of that, is that... But what struck me reading this report, with the timely nature of that, is that, especially in here, that there are six deaths that are essentially as a result of distraction outside the vehicle or similar circumstances. I know in my area, on Glebe Park, the mini roundabouts have had crosses painted on them, Ruskin Avenue, the zebra crossing has had some paint added to it as well. Now, my understanding is that, because if somebody was to claim that as a distraction, you could potentially have somebody that was driving at speed or under the influence of alcohol, and they could actually claim that there was a distraction because our infrastructure isn't appropriate. And I'd just like to know if that's correct, and really whether this is something that's on the radar for the Road Safety Partnership as to how, how that could potentially impact these figures moving forward.
Thank you, councillor, that feels a bit like a loaded handgun. No, I think it's a tough one for us because, you know, we, like many people across the UK at the moment, you know, are patriotic and enjoy seeing the flags out. From a purely safety point of view, these markings are defined in TSRGD and other documents, and so we would expect them to look the way that they were designed. It is a road traffic offence to vandalise them, if that is what we want to term it. So from our point of view, of course, we want those road markings to be as clear and visible as we possibly can. That said, there are areas in the country that have had a number of trials where they've used coloured markings, for example, on zebra crossings and other areas to try and highlight other issues. So, you know, there's a balance to be had, I think it's for members of the organisation to define their policy on how those should be cleaned, if they are to be, or whether it's done through routine maintenance, for example. I think if you were to take, for example, a mini roundabout that had a thin red stripe on it and tried to claim that you were distracted or didn't know that it was a mini roundabout and therefore that a collision occurred, you'd probably be struggling in court, I would think. That would be my perspective on it. But again, there's a balance, I think, you know, they're defined, sorry, designed in a certain way for good reason. I don't know if that has answered the question or not.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Clark.
Thank you. Steve, being a bit cynical here, I could say the partnership's done a really good job going to schools because most of the scooters I see are on the footpath, and now you get bikes on the footpath, you get everything on foot. Is there any enforcement on that, or do you actually cover the footpaths?
Thank you, councillor. We specifically, the team that are sat within the Road Safety Partnership, have no enforcement capability to deal with that issue, but I do know that it's something that is very high up on Lincolnshire Police because through the neighbourhood policing teams and through MPs and local councillors, it's raised quite a lot. Not only, I think, did it start as a nuisance, but I think it has become quite hazardous and a danger. E-scooters for one, but certainly the e-motorbikes as well. And again, it's not just on the carriageway or the physical, on the road itself, it is on the footpath and at great speed as well. So Lincolnshire Police, I am aware, have been doing enforcement campaigns, firstly trying to raise education and awareness around the issue, but then doing specific operations. I know there's been at least two in Lincoln in recent times, but it is just outside my area of responsibility.
Thanks, Stephen. I think we've come to the end of the questions. I do have one comment to make, which is, you do have a lot of councillors here who would, we love to be involved with the Road Safety Partnership, especially with secondary schools, and if there's any opportunity for sponsorship to enable every child, regardless of whether they walk or cycle or ride a scooter to school, that they are given some form of lighting that they could have, as we all know, four o'clock, half four on a wet, miserable Friday afternoon in December, we can't see our children and, you know, and we would love as councillors to be involved in going to schools and talking to the children. The only other point I'd like to raise is, I do go to three parish councils who regularly send Sid data to yourselves. What do you do with that data?
Thank you, councillor. So to the first point, as you know, we do a lot of work around visibility, conspicuity and making sure that children can be as seen as well as they possibly can. Of course, many schools will dictate that their outerwear needs to be black or blue, which of course doesn't help as well. We're very happy to look into some sort of campaign. We have in the past been able to give away certain amounts of lights or reflectors or sort of wraps that go around the jackets, et cetera, so that's an action we'll take away and look into. With regard to community speed watch data, it is something that provides a bit of a challenge, a bit of dissatisfaction from some groups. So our position has always been the same, it hasn't altered. We don't ask for that data, we don't use that data. We recommend that when purchasing the devices, the communities buy ones without the data simply to reduce costs to themselves. However, many do like to have that information available, so it has a use and that's absolutely fine. Our decision-making processes are going to be consistent, to come back to councillor Wright's point, we're going to measure like for like. So that includes a seven-day speed survey, which looks all of the vehicles that have gone through in that period. It's covert, we know how many people are speeding, I appreciate it's a snapshot, but it gives us a very good idea. And it's rare that when we get data through on the occasions we've been asked to look at it, it differs dramatically from the snapshot that we get. But we don't need that, we will make our decisions based on consistent evidence that we've gathered because those devices are calibrated, they're operated correctly, we control the information, we control the data. There's a number of different reasons why those speed indicator devices might not be appropriate. It could be that they're sighted close to the change in the speed limit to warn drivers and slow them down coming in, which is vital, but it also means they're being captured in a different speed limit to the one that they're concerned about. Equally, those devices can be subject to slippage, it's something that we're aware of when we do, for example, mobile operation, but it can't be sure if that's an issue there as well. So there's a number of things like that, so we don't use it. But people are welcome to send it, we do look at it, we just don't use it as a part of our decision-making tools.
Wonderful. So they're able to send it, but you just can't use it because of the reasons outlined? Wonderful. In that case, as we have no more questions, I would like to move that the committee endorse the report, that our satisfaction be recorded in relation to the assurances received by officers, and I ask that our comments from today, discussion are cascaded across relevant teams and shared with portfolio holders for their information and relevant actioning. Does anyone dissent to that proposal? Please raise your hand. No? Thank you, that is agreed. So moving on to agenda item number nine, Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item is found on pages 135 to 140 of the Agenda Pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of the work programme, and this report was presented by Kiara Hatiatu. Over to you, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. The committee is in every meeting invited to review and comment on the work of its own work programme for the year ahead, and this is to ensure that scrutiny remains appropriately focused, relevant and adds value to the work of the council and its partners. That being said, taking our gaze to the next meeting, that will be held on the 20th of October 2025. Members, you will be considering five substantive items, two of them being pre-decision scrutiny, and these are the Right of Way Improvement Plan and the Lincolnshire Permit Scheme Fee Review Proposal. We shall also receive a scrutiny report on highways' customer liaison strategy, as Mr Evans has alluded to earlier. We will also receive an annual report on the traffic parking enforcement information and data, and we will receive a report on the Traffic Regulation Orders Team Performance, which is a performance scrutiny report. Two items that were previously listed in the report published with this Agenda Pack have been removed from the agenda of the next meeting, as you will or you may have indeed noticed. These are the Lincoln Yarborough Hill Bank Slip Project, which has been pulled from the next meeting and rescheduled for the meeting on the 8th of December 2025. The decision for this has been made on the basis that officers required more time to explore options and ensure that recommendations and options are detailed and robust. And in addition to that, we also have a removal of the item around King's Charles, the third England coast path, the Capital Programme Bridge at Gibraltar Point. Now, this item is going to be going to the overview and scrutiny management board, unfortunately, and this is due to timeline constraints as unfortunately the deadlines for our next meeting fall very, very closely to the date of the decision that needs to be made. Other than that, we have no further changes to the work programme as it has been published. However, I always welcome the input from members of this committee and also officers in terms of highlighting any items that you would like to see being included in the future work programme of this committee for the year ahead and beyond, and also where officers have items and topics that they wish to inform us about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kiara, for your report. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements, ask questions. Councillor Robinson.
Yeah, councillor Christopher.
Thank you. I think it'd be very useful for us to get a report on the ongoing cost or the future cost of removing the flags when they start to look tatty, if we're not going to remove them straight away, and also repairing our existing infrastructure, what the actual cost burden of that's going to be to the highways department. I think it'd be quite useful for the committee to understand that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clark.
The one I brought up earlier about parking on verges, because, you know, we really got to have a policy on this, because I think there is a two-tier approach on it, because when you go out of the city, there seems to be completely different rules applied.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for your suggestions. I would like to say that in terms of your suggestion, councillor Christopher, I will have a discussion with officers to see how we can accommodate this and what the best option in terms of whether bringing a debatable report or issuing information around that would be more appropriate. And also in terms of your suggestion, councillor Clark, we have seen this topic as part of a scrutiny review that was undertaken by a panel previously, and colleagues across the room from me would be able to confirm that something relevant to that will be coming into this committee for a debate and discussion as part of that review very shortly, hopefully. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for all your questions and comments. This now concludes... Oh, councillor Vern, did you, oh, I didn't see you wave, sorry councillor Vern.
Sorry, I do apologise. I just, can I just seek some clarity? So the item one on the 20th of October agenda has been pulled completely, Lincoln Yarborough Hill.
No, it's not been pulled completely, it has been moved to the meeting on the 8th of December, and it will be the first item to be taken on the agenda.
So will the executive councillor's decision be pushed back? That won't be being taken between the 30th of October and the 11th of November, because otherwise what would be the point?
So in the most recently published forward plan, the new date for the decision that has been published is between the 10th and the 24th of December. My colleague Rachel Wilson is in present today, and she will be able to confirm that.
In that case, if there is no further questions? Wonderful. Thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes discussion of this item. I move that we note the report and endorse the existing work programme as detailed in pages 135 to 140, with the caveat of any additional items highlighted in the scrutiny officers' presentation to be reflected in the next published iteration of the document. Does anyone dissent to this? Please indicate now. Thank you very much. That has been agreed. And that now concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you to you members and public and press for your attendance here for this rather long meeting, but I feel that we have scrutinised very well all the reports, so I do thank you for giving your time here, and I look forward to seeing you very soon in the chamber and virtually. Thank you very much.